Do you have any strong feelings on this one? Ms. Perleberg.
I did just have a clarifying question if within the bylaws there was any sort of minimum set of school boards attending that, you know, like a quorum basically established at all or is-
That's a great question.
-if there's any minimum that at one point they would say we do not have enough members to actually vote and have.
I can't recall.
Okay.
I can't recall if that's been brought up before.
Okay.
It's generally... I really can't recall. I can look that up between now and Tuesday and we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Overall, my feeling is bylaws are kind of like their constitution and to me it should be difficult. It should be more difficult. There's a reason that there was a threshold there in the first place and it really should be kind of uprising before you change the constitution, before you change the bylaws. That's just my general feeling, that the threshold should be higher. Mrs. Kirby.
I would agree with that. I would... So what I'm hearing you say is that you would not vote yes on this change.
I wouldn't.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I have that concern as well.
Are we okay? Okay, okay. So there's... Nobody would object if she writes no down? Okay.
Correct.
Number three, the president, past president of ASBA Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus will have seats on the ASBA Board of Directors. Currently, there's one seat on the ASBA Board for the Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus only and then there is one for the Black Caucus. So the Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus is seeking greater representation. What they would like is to have the president and the past president each have an automatic seat. So any thoughts on that? I can share mine with you.
I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Oh, well, there have been times when that caucus has been very fractured and so this was their way of presenting it forward so that they could alternate years. My feeling is that if they can't come to agreement and can't come to consensus within their own group, that maybe they should have two groups and petition for the president of each to have a seat. But that isn't what they've asked for at this time. That isn't what they've proposed. Ms. Hartman.
And maybe you can clarify this, but my takeaway was that it's two groups and they alternate between Native American and Hispanic representation each, every other year in terms of the president.
It's a caucus and their practice recently has been that, but there's... I don't know that there's anything in their bylaws over it.
Well, the reason why I say that is it's representing two large populations of students in our state, so I would think it would be reasonable that they each have representation. And I thought the reason why they staggered it was that, so that it kind of worked out that way and that's why they were bringing that forward.
Mm-hmm. There's just different thoughts on ways to approach that.
Are you blinking?
You're blinking. You are blinking. Mrs. Kirby.
I would go back to the same comments you shared on the last item in that it should be very... We should be very thoughtful before we start changing these and adding and deleting seats on an executive board, I believe, is a slippery slope because who knows who else is out there that might then take an approval of this action as an indicator that, okay, maybe we need to lobby for an additional seat.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I don't know how many are on the-
Currently, there's 24 board members serving and there are board members, two board members from the larger counties and one from each of the counties. So the rural areas in the different counties are already...
Representing.
They have a representation there.
So are there also... This is a culture. This is an ethnic group. Are there other ethnic groups represented as well? Is there a Caucasian board member, an African-American board member?
In the entire board, there's a great representation, but-
As a specific seat because they represent that group, not because they're representing their geography?
The Black Caucus, the president of the Black Caucus has a permanent seat. And they have separate meetings. They have... And they have a separate representation. That was voted on by... It did meet the threshold when it came to enlarging the board, when that particular one came before the board. It's, I mean, that's all I can give you. I don't have any more information.
Can you articulate a little bit about what the process was and how these bylaw changes actually came to be? I was assuming that it went through an elected board, a governance committee that looked at it thoroughly, then recommended it to the board, and then the board was recommending it to us.
No, this is part of history that goes beyond my knowledge.
Okay.
The way it's set up is how I've known it to be for eight years. So I tend to agree with Mrs. Kirby in that if it is meant to be, it'll meet the threshold that's currently set, then, you know, then three-quarters of the, or two-thirds of the entire group will vote yes and then it'll happen, but-
That makes sense to me, too.
I don't know. I'm not sure we're in agreement here. Yeah.
Yeah.
My feeling is there's another way to handle it that may, where they may be able to coalesce more and focus more on whether or not they even want to stay together because there has been discord.
But just to clarify, so the proposal is not that Hispanic and a separate Native American caucus be formed and the representative from each?
No, that isn't the-
It is two from this caucus and-
Right, right.
Okay. Which that might be an alternative that they might consider at a later time. Is that accurate? Okay.
Depending on whether this goes through or not, I would think that they'd look at another alternative.
I'm with you. I would say no on this one.
Okay.
I would agree.
Me, too.
Okay, so the next three are really kind of... If you decide, you can say no to all of them because they all do constitute changes to the bylaws, but they're kind of mutually exclusive. So if there's any that you look at that you prefer to tell them that yes, that stand out, I would... I do know people have run from the floor when I was there, but I don't know if you had any when you went. Okay. The people that did run from the floor when I was there had gone through, they have an application process through their governance committee and that governance committee will bring forth their recommendation. Right now, they bring forth one recommendation and then you can run, others can run from the floor. The whole time that I've been there, anybody that's run from the floor has gone through the process, has made the application to the governance committee, but there's nothing prohibiting people that just want to last minute decide, "Oh, I'm going to throw my name in there." So at this point, there's not. Yes.
So the one proposal-
Perleberg, sorry.
That, thank you. The one proposal that, I think it's Proposal D here, that those wishing to run from the floor provide one week written notification. That would, that's kind of in practice, you're saying, what most often happens?
Well, generally what most often happens is that ASBA will put out a call for anyone who would like to run. This is just officers. This isn't the whole board seat. So anybody who would like to run, they put a call out, they put several calls out and there is an application and they get interviewed by the governance committee. Notifying the governance committee a week ahead that you're going to put your name in from the floor is not guaranteeing that they've gone through the process or met with the governance committee at all. But it does give them a heads up that somebody's going to run from the floor. That's what would happen in that option. Option three is trying to deny anybody from running from the floor at all. And let's see, option... Well, I'm just going to stay consistent. Four was a candidate wishing to run from the floor at the annual business meeting. For an officer position, must provide one week written notice of the intention to do so to the governance committee. Option five is running from the floor for an officer position on Board of Directors will not be allowed at the... Well, this, there's a typo there. And the nominating committee is required to provide two or more names. So those two names would come from people that have gone through the application process and were vetted by the governance committee and then those two names will be presented to the floor. The problem with that is they don't always have two applicants, so I don't know what that would create.
So what's, do you know what this is trying to address? I'm not sure what the...
Yeah.
It's a solution to some problem, but I don't understand what the problem is.
I think, I think it's just that people at the very last minute deciding they don't like who the candidate is, so they raise their hand and say, "I'm going to run from the floor."
I'm okay with that.
Well, that's how it is right now.
And I would-
That's how it's been for a long time.
Then I would leave it. I'm not, I'm not understanding the rationale to make the change, so therefore I'm hesitant to make the change.
I think the governance committee just feels like, and I can't speak for all of them, but I think they just feel like they go through a very thoughtful process and then it gets tossed out. So this is probably coming, these options are probably coming as an answer to that problem, but again, we can say no to all of it if we don't feel like the bylaws should be changed. And I'm always cautious to change bylaws, always. I understand, you know, how some people could be frustrated, but I think sometimes you end up with unintended consequences that you hadn't thought of. So I'm comfortable saying no to all three.
Right, I agree.
Me, too.
I agree.
And again, if there's, if there's something that's more refined that comes forward next year, then that can be looked at again. Or if two-thirds of the voting body decide that one of these is best, then it'll happen, but, okay. Okay, well, we can give our secretary instruction then and this will come back on consent agenda and if anybody finds anything out between now and then that makes them uncomfortable with what we've talked about tonight, then we can certainly bring it up before we vote on the consent agenda. Thank you. The next information item is 3B, Middle School International Baccalaureate Program.
No, we don't want to restart. Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Birdwell, good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to provide you information for discussion regarding the establishment of an international baccalaureate middle years program. Joining me at the podium tonight are Mrs. Terry Cullen, Principal of Mountainside Middle School, and Mrs. Nikki Wilford, Principal of Desert Mountain High School, and we hope to inform you and take your questions so we can move forward. The middle years school philosophy, and so what I did here was gleaned a lot of information and tried to compile from international baccalaureate, kind of the essence of what the middle years program is. And essentially, I think the important piece here is that the learning is articulated to the development of the student and that student's international outlook and perspective. Instructionally, there is a shift from teacher-led to student-led instruction and also then we try to build upon real-world projects and such to build a relevance of the learning to world issues. I think that captures really what the philosophy of the middle years program is. Now, a couple things for context as we move forward. One, this is not a middle school international baccalaureate program. It is a middle years and it encompasses grades six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. So it's five years. That's why we have middle school right up through the high school in this. This would have an impact then on our existing pre-diploma program and our diploma program at Desert Mountain High School. The other thing for context tonight, we are presenting this under the presumption that we would have an entire or school-wide program at the middle school level, so all children at Mountainside would be participating, likewise the freshmen and sophomores, a whole school program at Desert Mountain in which all freshmen and sophomores are participating. In doing some of the research, a strand, so to speak, is not available at the middle schools, although there was even some conversation that IB would entertain that, but we're not going that route. Also, though, we could look at possibly looking at a strand exclusively at the high school. But for tonight's conversation, we're presenting budget and all those figures in the premise that this is whole school here and here.
Whole school.
Whole school, entire, across. Okay. So now that I probably utterly confused you with all of that, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Cullen for a moment.
The curriculum, the eight curriculum groups are core subject areas, language arts, social studies, which has a fancy name, individuals and sciences, or, sorry, societies, science and math, and physical education and arts are an equal part of this. And the two components that probably stick out to you the most are design and language acquisition. Language acquisition is a second language, so all students at Mountainside six, seven, and eight would be required to be in a second language course as one of their core subjects. And then design is really the application of technology, which honestly, fortunately, at Mountainside is so perfect because I actually have that class. It would have to be tweaked, like all my classes would be, through the training, but my STEM class, an elective at Mountainside right now, is very much the application of technology and design. So that would fit very well at Mountainside. Dr. Van Necht had mentioned it, the biggest difference is the approach to learning with NYPD with six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and that is something we will learn through the training, but the international and cultural and service aspect is all a part of that. That is a requirement through the middle years program. And the personal project is the culminating project in 10th grade and not in the six, seven, and eighth grade, but in the 10th grade. So those are the major components of the curriculum. There is clearly a lot more to this that we would go in much more depth with after we start, if we start, with our training with academics. So that is an overview of the expectation of the academics. Am I good?
Okay, so I'm going to share with you the process, which is an involved one. And this graphic is a little complex, but I'm going to go through it and then we'll actually break it down through a timeline that's a little simpler. So first is the consideration phase and the school profile. So that's really where we are now. Layered with that, you see underneath is the head or appropriate designee attending a category one workshop and starting that process of staff attending workshops. The next step is the request for candidacy and then in addition, the application for candidacy. There's lots of applications and lots of paperwork and lots of steps. Then we receive a decision on the candidacy by IB, so then we get the word that we are allowed to go into the actual candidate phase. And you see again that bottom layer, as that's happening concurrently, there's the completion of teacher professional development. So you're starting to get staff trained, you're starting to kind of weave in some of that philosophy as you're going through this process. So then, if you enter the candidate phase, that is your trial implementation. So you are actually implementing the program at that point, but you are not officially a program yet. So three steps underneath that candidate phase, there's a consultation process where someone from IB comes out and goes through with you all of the training and all of the processes and making sure that you're on track. The next layer then is the request for authorization and an application for authorization. And then the final step there is a verification visit to the school. So someone from IB comes out again and double checks and makes sure that you are following all of the components and all of the right parts are in place and then a decision is made on whether or not you are authorized as an NYPD program. And then you see that bottom layer under there again is then the ongoing commitment to professional development and training and sustaining the program. So what that looks like in a year-by-year plan for this current school year, leadership training and heads of school training, feasibility study, which is kind of like it sounds, is it feasible for the school, or in this case, schools, to actually implement the program? Is the funding available? Is there support from district leadership? Is there support from your school board? And all of that has to be sort of proven and documented before you go on and then you move into the application for candidacy. So those pieces would take place this school year. The next school year, you would launch into teacher training and that training is called implementing the NYPD curriculum. So again, the curriculum in terms of content and standards doesn't change. It's the approach to teaching that is really what that training is about. NYPD coordinators would need to be identified at both the high school level and at the middle school level. We would need to start implementing the changes to the middle school planning guide and to the high school planning guide. For example, that design course that Terry mentioned, that's not a course yet technically. So those things would need to go into the high school planning guide and be written up and adjusted so that we fit the program model. And then, of course, community education and promotion because right now this is on a very small scale in terms of who we've spoken to and we're just at these sort of infancy stages, but we would need to start talking to parents and staff and students about what this would actually look like. Then in 1819, we would be in that candidate school phase. So again, you're implementing the curriculum, but you haven't actually been granted authorization yet. You're still a candidate. So that would be that entire school year of 1819, continued professional development and teacher training, the IB consultation that I mentioned before, the request for authorization, and then that final verification visit where you find out if you actually are authenticated as a program. Then lastly, 1920, nothing moves quickly in this process. We would hope at that point to both be authorized as IB NYPD schools, continued teacher development, of course, any teacher turnover, any new staff that's added through the process, everyone would need to be trained, and then, of course, a plan for a program, plan for program maintenance and sustainability, both financially, staffing, training, all of those things to keep the program rolling, which of course IB monitors very carefully to make sure you're staying on track.
So I took that same timeline for implementation and this time layered the costs that we would have year by year and in addition to that, I provided for you in a few slides a summary of what those projected costs would be. So this spring, we would have a, right up front, we'd have the application candidacy fee of $4,000 and then a training for the heads of school and I'm looking at five participants for that. Essentially, when it comes to most of the IB trainings, a ballpark figure is about $2,000 per person to attend. They are generally out of state, so we have conference costs and training costs associated and also travel and lodging and things of that nature. So that would be the cost associated immediately this spring. As we go through that same timeline trajectory then, next year, we would have the candidacy fee, training. This time, we would have 16 teachers training, again, using $2,000 per teacher, a teacher representing eight of those curricular content areas, we thought, training for an initial start. With that, then, we will incur some substitute costs. I'm using there $100 per day, or in this case, then, that would provide for 40 days of costs of substitute. And then, of course, we would start beginning to pay a release time of a .4 FTE for a middle year, middle school coordinator and a middle years program high school coordinator. Now we start going out two years and the costs begin to escalate in terms of now getting to the program in its in-place. Again, we would have an annual candidacy fee. This would be the year we'd seek that verification status, so there was a fee associated with that. Continued training, and again, I just used a figure of five teachers per school per year, substitutes associated with that, the continued payment of the FTE for release time. We would also by that time be purchasing a curriculum unit warehouse and there's various vendors that provide this and rather than provide that vendor name, simply what it is, is it's a web-based shell that you can begin to have a definitive student information system just for your IB kids where you can house curriculum, the assessments they take, all the various checkoff pieces they need that would follow them all the way through up into the IB diploma program. Desert Mountain is utilizing a program similar right now for their juniors and seniors in their IB diploma program. So we're familiar with that. Excuse me. The additional staffing, this has been the hardest cost to pin down because essentially in working with Mrs. Wilford and Cullen, trying to build what that master schedule model would look like, it's been a little difficult because we still have a lot of unknowns, but essentially what we're looking at is an additional 1.4 potentially at the middle school and 1.0 at the high school. Frankly, I think that could be a little bit higher, but we went with those numbers. As we build the course and kids, more kids are going into a foreign language class because of the IB program, there is kind of a zero-sum game that also means that some of our students left other courses. So little difficult getting a number there, but I think we've got a fairly accurate number in that dollar amount. And then we would look at some supply budgets. So again, right now, our IB program utilizes a supply budget specifically for promotional materials, registration materials, things of that nature. We put, we built a number in for that. And then really, this would be the cost associated with it once implemented and this would be, I guess, an annual look at what these new costs would look like of approximately a quarter million dollars. You would still have an annual IB NYPD fee. This is for both schools. There would be continued professional development for our up to 10 teachers a year, substitutes that would be provided to cover those and any internal training we may have done, continue to pay our coordinators, the curriculum unit warehouse, the additional staffing, supply budgets, and then we also at this point, we would look at personal project advisors. One of the pieces that, when Mrs. Cullen was talking about the curriculum, is that a culmination event by the sophomore year is that all IB students in the MY year program, NYPD program, would complete a personal project. So what we would look at is providing a stipend or addenda to teachers to sponsor and advise those students, is what I should say, at $100 per student to help them get through that event and help them complete that project. This then is a budget summary of all the costs by year and what they look at. I footnoted then in the down below what those various costs, how I came up with those calculations, so to speak. Challenges, we will have some. With any new project, there's always some challenges to get through. I think that what we could look at is our first three bullets are kind of collectively a bit of a challenge here in that there's always an impact to middle and high school master scheduling. Anytime you introduce new courses, and in this case, what might be several new courses, creating that master schedule, the problems encountered, the new singletons that emerge that you now have to adjust, scheduling for an entire high school in this program with your freshmen and sophomores, that will be a challenge, but nothing that we can't tackle. Articulation of the middle and high school schedules. Now, there would be a change to the bell schedule at Mountainside to accommodate these eight classes. They would probably go to a seven-period day versus a six-period day. Not a change in, thank you, not a change in the length of day. Did I make it sound, I hope not. No, length of day, bell to bell's still there, but now we're going to fit in, we're going to fit in- going to fit in, there's seven periods versus six. So the bell schedule might look a little bit different, which is why I have the instructional minutes down below as a bolded point. We want to make sure, once we've established that bell schedule and all the new passing periods, make sure we're hitting the instructional minutes. But a challenge would be then, so for instance, we currently have GeoTrig kids from Mountainside that go over to Desert Mountain. And so how does that new bell schedule align and we get some compatibility there? A challenge again, as I pointed, we will have some additional staffing needs. We will might, we might begin to see some movement of our world language teachers from Desert Mountain to Mountainside as we look at potential models of students taking a Spanish one or a French one in grade seven and a Spanish or French two in grade eight, which we don't do at this point. That would really necessitate a movement of staffing from the middle to the high school potentially there. Some also thing, to consider that with the languages, I can tell you that they're hard to find, and so there is that, the recruitment of highly qualified world language teachers will be difficult. There'll be an impact to other elective programs as we see staffing shifts. We might want to look at transfer language in terms of what we've invested in our IB teachers and then due to where they are and when it comes to staffing, would we want them moved? Or would we want to have language that would allow them to be retained at Mountainside or at Desert Mountain, once we've made that investment in that teacher? And then of course, we will have a transition from the current pre-diploma program to a new IB MYP program at Desert Mountain. So lots of things to consider as we move forward. Our next steps, well, we're here. One is government board approval and endorsement so we can continue with the IB institution. Leadership training that we need to do, they won't even let you begin the application until we send a group to that leadership training. The feasibility study, frankly, you're looking at the feasibility study, that budget I showed you, all these things are a part of that, and we're in the midst of identifying the feasibility here. We need to begin to educate our community and staff as to what this might look like, the actual application process, and then establish our budget and adopt that to support the program. And with that, I thank you and we can take your questions.
Mrs. Kirby.
Am I on still?
You're on.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask. I was thinking of my questions, I reserve the right to come back, but I'll ask the first, most pressing one. Help me understand again, so the whole school converts, the whole, Mountainside as an entire school would convert, and I hear you correctly, that the ninth and 10th grades at Desert Mountain High School, the whole grade level would convert as well? Or is that wrong?
Correct, as we presented.
And what percentage of your ninth and 10th graders are pre-IB?
It's about a third at this point in time. You would still, there are a couple of options. As we go down this road, we could apply for a school within a school, similar to what we do with the diploma model, that may or may not be accepted by IB. The other thing is, we currently have regular classes at those levels, honors classes, and then of course, pre-diploma. You could still maintain all of those levels of coursework. It would just be under the MYP umbrella and those people would be trained in that methodology and in that learning approach. So you would still choose, we wouldn't call it pre-diploma anymore, we'd have to massage that, but you could choose IB, you could choose, just in freshman honors, English for example, or regular courses, but they would all be taught with that MYP approach, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so then what happens junior, senior year?
Nothing changes there. That is still the diploma program. So kids at the end of sophomore year determine if they want to apply and move on to the diploma program or not. So nothing changes with the diploma program.
Okay, and then one other pressing question that I had was, what are other public school districts in the East Valley, our PV, Chandler, Gilbert, those, is anyone else doing this already? Were we first ones out of the gate?
I think we're the last one.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just want to add, when we visited a couple of schools, Ms. Wilford and Dr. Von Eckert and I, it was very, very serious message about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade needing to be a whole school, that they really were not accepting in their experience. Although those schools did have a strand still, it's been a real struggle to maintain that. But the high schools still did.
Okay. And, okay, so for people that might not be, understand as you speak all the way through, can you explain the approach? Can you explain what interdisciplinary means? And I mean, I see it as more of a Socratic approach as well, has been my experience, and that's why, I think that's what I valued most of it, was interdisciplinary and Socratic approach. But just a quick explanation of that different approach.
It very much is, very much what you said. And integration, interdisciplinary is integration of subject areas, and that is a requirement for MYP.
So if it's like the IB program, the math and the science line up the whole way so that they actually mean something to each other as you go along and can be reinforced in each class? And then the same thing with what we call language arts and the social studies.
Absolutely. It's not as strict as the DP program, the diploma program, but it certainly is a heavy layer of that, yes.
So it follows that philosophy.
And my teachers will have to submit lesson plans and have them verified and approved using those approaches to learning that we will learn about, hopefully. But you know, the inquiry, the critical thinking skills, it's heavy, heavy everywhere in all the eight academic areas.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hartman, you were next.
All right, thank you. So first, I appreciate the creativity and innovation, I think that's, really appreciate you bringing that forward. Couple of questions, two broad questions, and I'll just hold on to some detailed questions. So I clearly heard though, the what and the how, but I didn't hear really the why. You started answering some of the why, I think, in response to the question, I heard a little bit, but why? Why should we do this? Why? Why is it important?
I'll say something. Two main reasons. To build and develop and strengthen the diploma program at Desert Mountain High School, certainly makes sense for Mountainside Middle School to be that school, to do that, next door to each other. And honestly, to compete with my neighboring schools. And offering another level of academic excellence that we already have at Mountainside. So those for me are the two biggest whys.
I think one of the other sort of benefits is really the philosophy, especially with MYP, and part of why they don't like you to do with a school within a school and they want it to be for everyone, is because it really is good teaching and good critical thinking and teaching students how to analyze and approach learning in a different way, which is good for everybody. So you know, we talk a lot as a district and extensively at Desert Mountain about really two things, student engagement and critical thinking. Well, that's what this is all about. So it really is just good teaching, but it's a tighter framework. And instead of, hey, go engage your kids and teach them to think critically, there's training and programming and a real tight framework for making that happen.
I think one other piece too, I had the pleasure of moderating a panel of selective colleges the other evening at one of our high schools. And the question came from a student about preparation for admittance to such exclusive schools. And the gentleman from Yale spoke to the preparation that an IB program provides and that what they see in students coming from an IB program, they're well-prepared to be attending Ivy League schools and such.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Just one more thought to Ms. Kirby's question before too, in terms of, are we sort of first to the party or late to the party? And I think in this respect, we're very late to the party and to, you know, we've been very successful with our diploma program. And it definitely fits a certain need and a certain niche, but to not have the building blocks of the full program, of course, we don't know what we're missing because we're not doing it. But to have that piece where those kids are really receiving those foundations at a much, much younger age to then move on through the program, I think is a component that we sort of don't know how much we're missing because we haven't done it.
Okay. I still have another, I have a follow-up question, I still have a question. So, so just clarifying question, is the only prerequisite difference, different for a student in the program, in addition to what's happening today, is a language requirement? Other than, I understand the curriculum changes, but, and I guess where I'm going with this is, why wouldn't critical thinking and all, and I'm actually very familiar with the IB program, but the components of it, which are, we actually talked about the components from, you know, we've talked about gifted program too, where the majority of those components really apply to all 21st century learners and all competitive, you know, graduates. How can, they would be, I don't understand why, this feels like it's unique to Desert Mountain and the IB MYP program, other than, so you see what I'm saying?
So Mrs. Hartman, if I might, President State, so there are correlates of the IB program at the middle level, high school level, that are simply good instructional practices. More of an emphasis on the inquiry, the critical thinking, the Socratic methodology than you might see in other first best practices, but much of what you see is first best practice with greater emphasis. And then the language component that goes with that as well. The integration of thematic, not integration of thematic, disciplinary integration, however, is different. Not that you don't see fragments of that in various places. And when we look at the model, and when we are talking about some of the remodeling other places in the district, I think you're going to see some of these same components rise, even though they may not be in this particular program. But it's not uncommon to see language arts and history combined in an interdisciplinary program. Very common across the state. American Studies has been around for quite a long time and teachers naturally like to fit English and social studies together. So I think the critical pieces, yes, those 21st century skills, we think that we should see that everywhere, with a greater emphasis in International Baccalaureate, with a thematic approach to global issues and international issues, and a different lens on that besides just the core curriculum that we typically see in the standard, Arizona standards, that takes beyond the Arizona standards into an international standard and looking at global issues.
I guess I'm understanding, I'm just not, if this is what is required of a 21st century learner, I'm not sure why this would be isolated to one learning community. Why wouldn't we be doing this everywhere? I want to up your game and move it across the district.
Thank you for that. I think we're headed that direction. I think that each community, however, as it goes through a design phase process, and as we look at Cornell High School and some of the design pieces that we'll be talking to the community about in January, we'll have some of the same conversations about 21st century Socratic, critical thinking, and how critical it is to add these same components. And it may not be called an IB program, it might be an innovation program, it might have a different focus. You see schools that have STEM focuses or STEAM focuses because there's a certain portion of academics that they're focusing on, but if you go back to the correlates of instruction, they're there. That's where the critical thinking and the inquiry skills, and any STEAM program has heavy inquiry and critical thinking embedded into it. International Baccalaureate goes to an end program. And the end program is the diploma program that is recognized internationally and at every university. So it's that end piece that actually is the real winner, is when you get to the junior and senior and decide, I want to be a part of the actual certificate process.
So then for us to implement this across the district and whatever it manifests itself in, is it always going to be about half a million dollars per school, so it's two and a half a million dollars?
No, this is International Baccalaureate. And so I like the interest in the cost, so just quick figures, when you take the ADM of a child and divide it into half a million dollars, you're talking about 150 kids. The question that one would ask themselves, have we lost in Mountainside and Desert Mountain 150 kids to the competitors? And the answer to that would be more than. Do I believe that 150 kids will stay or come back because we have a high-level opportunity for them? I absolutely do. I think the program will pay for itself in a matter of a few years. So 150 student increase between these two schools will pay the cost of a half a million dollars. I think if you actually begin to see 20 new kids coming back a year, it's not going to take long to get that 150 extra students back that fund this program through a natural growth. So is the initiative, back to your, more of a correlate of your question, when do we improve academically across this district? Is it going to cost us a half a million dollars everywhere? No. No, this is International Baccalaureate and you're paying for some licensing and specific materials in a diploma program that allows the students to be able to have a different diploma when they graduate. When you talk about an innovation school or a STEM school, there is an investment. There's always an investment to truly do it right. There's an investment in teacher training, there's an investment in continued professional development. We look at our AP program right now and our honors program, we will be investing some money to get our teachers up to that standard. We pay $300,000 a year to have Avid. I'm not sure people know that. But as an Avid district, we pay $300,000 a year because it has to do with curriculum and training. So every program that you want to put a title to, does it mean that you cannot go forward with good practice without paying? If you want the program in the end, there will be a cost. If you want to raise a bar of instruction, there's a cost of professional development that goes with that.
Yeah, I have no problem with raising the bar and finding a way to invest in it. And just from the ADM alone, it sounds like the return on investment is fairly immediate, so that's a positive. I just, I guess I'm still, I'm supportive of it, I'm just, if the correlates are, yeah, if the correlates are what's required for all 21st century learners, I'm just not sure why we wouldn't be having this conversation at every learning community.
I think you'll see that as our high schools begin to look at developing their own unique signature programs, so to speak, these are the pieces that go in it. Do they meet what you're establishing as a criteria in terms of those 21st century learning skills? And yeah, there'll be associated costs, whether it's building and ramping up an AP program or a science and math academy at another school, there's always going to be that kind of associated cost. But absolutely, the bottom line is that we address the needs of our kids and address their learning, as you're pointing out.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, I think you were next.
Thank you for the presentation, and I just wanted to applaud three of your speakers for where you're heading, as we've been talking about upping our game, and we are, the competition is fierce, and you are answering that bell, I guess, to try to be more competitive. And I, this really sounds like a very logical step for us up there, and thank you for that. And I have just two quick questions. You anticipate an increase in the diploma, students getting IB diplomas, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I would anticipate that that would increase because more than anything, those kids will have come to the diploma program with five years of experience and understanding of the philosophy before they even get to that point, where now they may come, most of them with two years, some with one. And they, I think, will be sort of so assimilated and a part of the culture that is IB and that approach and that way of thinking, that I think it would increase those numbers.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And the second question is sort of probably a silly question, but at some point, we're moving along and then we have to get, we submit an application at some point with MYP?
International.
And they approve or disapprove, or don't accept or accept it. I'm assuming if it's not accepted, we simply, we're not dead in the water there, we can, they come back and what needs to be changed.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We have a pretty good estimate of that. And I guess the only last thing I want to say is just to follow up on what Senator Hartman's comments. This sounds fantastic to me, and a logical place to start this in our district. But of course, you know, these best practices have come out of that, and we'd love to see, obviously, in our other middle schools, of course. Anyway, thank you for all your hard work on this.
I'm Mrs. Perleberg. Thank you, thank you. And I also want to thank Senator Hartman for that question of why, because I think it really is important if it's going to move forward with integrity and with a real connection with your community there at Mountainside and Desert Mountain, you have to know that this is a good fit there and for these students and for this community. Appreciate the honesty about the competition, they're already there, I guess flip side is. is, we're not the guinea pig at least, so that's a good thing. I, I'm kind of assuming that in, in those other, other environments, they too have gone with a whole school model? Or, no, yes, no?
Not, not the schools we visited, no, because they have been in the, they have been in the program for a while. But the, it's very clear in the literature that they're not, they're no longer accepting strands for six, seven, and eight. And the current schools that are, have a strand are struggling, working really hard to maintain it, to, and not go whole school.
So, success-
They feel like they're going to be whole school.
So, successful whole schools, I assume, are here as a model, or, or for something to look, look at, you know, just look at them as a model, here, here in the valley? I mean, whole schools?
Middle schools with full, with full MYP implementation.
Or no?
So, there are some, maybe I should answer them for you, because you looked here in the East Valley, correct? So, there are other schools, for instance, in Tempe, and Kyrene is now looking at moving some of their programs this direction as well. But Tempe moved an entire, McCabie got, moved the entire school because of the same lesson that our principals are talking about. They learned from their predecessors, those who went before, who said, boy, trying to do a strand is really difficult, and we've learned some lessons, and had, we had to do it again, we'd have gone entire school. Because as you said, the correlates of instruction are good instruction. So, it doesn't eliminate any child in the community, doesn't say, because I'm not the top student, that I won't be successful in this environment. What it will do is take them at their learning point and actually stretch, learn them, but it doesn't exclude them. And so, when you try to just do a strand, what happens is the strand can die out as students come and go, and we have the mobility of students towards an entire school, you still have a campus coming through together.
Right, right. Yeah, I can see the advantages, but one question that kind of comes to mind when you talk about specific electives being required, is what are you giving up as far as the arts, the, the orchestra, the band, the, you know, those PE? How does that fit in, especially going with a whole school? What is that community giving up, and how?
Yeah, that, that, I really appreciate the question. So, so for example, if you're a band student, first of all, the arts are, are, like I said earlier, an equal part of MYP, arts and, and PE. They're required. And so, but if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, for example, if I have a student who is a band student, so he's in band all year long, and also has to have a language.
Right.
So, there's not room for PE necessarily. Those, there's going to be, or student-
Or any other elective, really.
Right, right. Or a student with special needs, that needs that elective time for some more support. Those students will not be excluded. However, they, they will, it will be written into our application, if you will, that there'll be some exceptions to, to that. And, and, and we can look at some creative ways to help those kids.
But overall, as far as the community, kind of connecting with that understanding, there's confidence there that, that it'll be positive and supported.
And it's something that would have to continually be messaged and continually be communicated to, to meet the needs of all of our students.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, very exciting.
Mr. Jackson, did you have another?
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay, I do. So, my first thought when we talked about going whole school at the middle school, is that IB has a reputation of being very rigorous, and, and especially because we have the diploma program at Desert Mountain, where some schools you can pick and choose IB classes, but we commit to a diploma program. There's a reputation that goes along with that for the rigor and the commitment. Now, I understand that, you know, this would be younger students, what, what difference, would there be a difference, and, and how is that going to be communicated to the parents? I guess because my initial thought was, well, what if you don't want your child? If, you might live in the neighborhood, you don't want your child to go to an IB school because you've heard things, you know, one way or the other. How are we going to massage that, and, and measure how many we may lose?
Well, there, there is that possibility that we could have some attrition, but I think that, you know, it's, it's a middle years, and hence, much like middle school, there is that nurturing component. I think IB is understanding of that, that we want to build the whole child. So, although I, I think sometimes the diploma program can be a bit daunting, and the expectation and, and that cultural aspect, I think that these are the foundations and the building blocks, and we need to message that to our, our middle school parents, that it is a very supportive program, and we'll nurture them through that, and they will have some options. And just as Mrs. Cullen said, we're not going to forego any of the opportunity to be in the arts or the physical education and some of these other interest areas they have. It's, under those eight content areas, there's a lot of, it's very inclusive of a lot of areas of study. And I think that, that bridges right through that freshman and sophomore year, and in fact, if anything, it might assist with a freshman transition from eighth to ninth, in that there's that continuity. And so, that will help at, at Desert Mountain. And then I think the one piece is that there is that opportunity after that sophomore year, that that student who says, this is not where I want to, to go in terms of my academics, I'm, I'm an AP student, and we offer that whole opportunity there to acquire and look at the AP program also, so that there's a lot of good options, as well as dual enrollment. But we've prepared them along that five-year path for any one of those choices come their, their junior year.
I guess that was one, my question for Ms. Wilford would be, what's your experience with students who may have started with IB program in their ninth and 10th, say they did pre-IB and then chose to go to AP? What's your experience with their success in, in that transition?
Their transition from pre-diploma to AP?
From, right, right.
Honestly, it's, it's sort of nonexistent. Those kids, because pre-diploma specifically, it's, it's about the thinking and the analysis and that skill set, those kids are prepared to go whichever direction. And, and I do think most of our pre-diploma kids, if they don't go into the diploma program, do take it, some number of AP courses, some of them take a whole day of AP courses. And, you know, AP is just a different philosophy, but the rigor is more or less the same. And so, it, it's that, that thinking that they're prepared for that translates and transfers really to anything.
Okay. Also, and I don't know, this may have changed over the years, but I do believe that when it came to pre-IB, that, and it might have been because at that time, we had to open and roll from our home school to Desert Mountain, so that might have been part of it. But my son had to fill out an application process.
We do applications for any of our incoming ninth graders for the pre-diploma program. And that is, it's really not a gatekeeping process as much as it is making sure that we're setting them up for success. So, the application is teacher recommendations, grades, test scores, and really what we're looking for is, if you've had Ds and Fs in middle school, pre-diploma might not be the best fit for you yet. So, that application process, anyone really in that A, B, and C range who wants into the program, we allow them in. Kids who may have some challenges, we will either ask them to wait a year, and kind of do that freshman transition and make sure that they're solid and prepared, or we will allow them in as kind of a probationary period, knowing that they may need some extra support. So, you know, the pre-diploma program as it stands now is a little different. The rigor is different, because we're really preparing them for diploma, where MYP is more inclusive, it's meant for every kid and, and every type of learner.
I think that's an important message.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I will, I just wanted to share one anecdote, that I know that there have been Desert Mountain families who have enrolled in Paradise Valley because they offer the middle years program. And they're, you know, they're our kids, and they, they could be going here, so I'm, I'm thrilled at the prospect, quite frankly. Surprise! Shouldn't be surprised at anybody, but.
Governing board, and, and I just want to just commend these two leaders for taking this on. As you know, as you saw in the plan, the first thing is leadership training and the willing to do that. One anecdote, when we were at the showcase, I took time to sit down with the IB kids and have a conversation, and had the conversation about, if you had had an opportunity to take a IB program in middle level, would you have done that? And 100% of your IB students that I spoke to said, oh, absolutely. So, this is kids looking back in time, saying, I wish I would have had that. So, the fact that we're looking to the future and providing opportunities, thank you.
One more anecdote, my, my son still says to the, and he comes back once in a while and talks to the schools, if he happens to be in town, when you have your gatherings, but his quote has always been, I don't know why I decided to do it, but it was the best decision I ever made. So, just to put that one out there, again, anecdotally. Okay, thank you very much. The next item is item 3C, open enrollment policy update.
So, we have Dr. McCauley, and accompanied with our House Attorney, Michelle Marshall.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Birdwell. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the open enrollment policy. You all have a draft, can you hear me? Okay. A draft of-
A little bit louder.
A little louder. A draft of, sorry, I lost where I was. A draft of what we have determined to be a really, the best course of action to take with our open enrollment policy. Currently, we have a lot of things in the, on the policy side that really needed to be moved to the regulation side, and we didn't have a regulation for our open enrollment policy. And so, what we did was, we did some line-outs on the policy itself, and then we moved some of the items, anything that had deadlines, for example, because if we need to change those, we don't want to have to come back to go through three reads, we should just be able to do that, and we can do that if it's on the regulation side, but, so that was that. And the other thing was, we needed some admissions criteria, because that was referenced in the policy, but then that was it. There was no explanation of it, and so, we put that in the regulations as well to give, really, it's for, in the best interest of students too, who may not be a good fit, and to have that policy in there. But I'm going to let Michelle answer the questions, since she will know the answers much better than I, because she knows all the legalese.
And Dr. McCauley, and President Steed, governing board, what you're seeing is law, policy is the interpretation of that law, but regulation is the practice, how we implement the policy. And it's really critical that in regulation, there is some ability for flexibility, because things change sometimes mid-year on us, or the competitor says, oh, I'm going to get two weeks ahead of that school, and I'm going to do my open enrollment mid-October or November 1st, and we want to jump out there with them, and so, as we're monitoring that, sometimes we might move a date to be competitive. In addition, as you know, we moved open enrollment back to the sites, and then in that process, the site said, we need a little help in processes. So, the regulation will begin to pick up the authority of the school to put safeguards in place to work with families of students who are struggling to meet the criteria of Scottsdale. I have attendance issues, I thought I could make it, I'm driving from Fountain Hills, but then I began to have attendance problems, because the drive is just, just creating an issue for the family. Or sometimes we'll have behavioral issues, continuous behavioral issues. Or you have a student who comes from another part of town who has two credits and they're 17, and that's probably not a good Scottsdale fit, because that's a dropout. And that means that that person will become our dropout rather than where they left. So, we want to be able to analyze transcripts, take a look at attendance, watch behaviors, and make sure that our young people are good fits for our campus, so that our culture on our campus remains where it should be. That authority goes back to a principal through the regulations, as the regulations guide them in making sure that we don't interfere with the rights of students either. So, legal counsel has made sure that the regulations are going to account for assisting and, and not creating an obstacle in such a manner that we would have a breach of law. So, she's, she's done a good conversation with us on that. After the regulations give a word, and it does require training, and making sure that at the site, they understand exactly what that practice is, and, and Michelle knows that she'll be helping us with that, but I'll turn the legal side back to her.
Thank you, Dr. Birdwell. Members of the board, it's been a while since I've spoken to you up here, so it's nice to be back. As you all know, we have had fun with this policy, it feels like every year since at least 2008. And so, when Dr. Birdwell came in, she was, she looked at this policy and said, why is all this stuff in here? And so, we took a look at this, Anna, Dr. McCauley and I met, and Dr. McCauley led a committee to talk about what makes sense. And as both Dr. McCauley and Dr. Birdwell said, the overall change that we made here is to take a lot of the implementation language out of the policy and move it into a regulation, which we did not have a regulation whatsoever. ASBA does have a model regulation, but that, that regulation is really brief, and because we had so much history and so much input into how we implemented our open enrollment policy, it made more sense to just take what we already had and move from there, instead of starting with what ASBA had and, and adding in. So, what I have provided you in your materials and what I have on the screen, is first the policy, JFB Open Enrollment, from the policy manual. And as I said, there's nothing really to highlight here, except the fact that we took most of the how-to-do-it language out of here and moved it to regulation. So, that's most of what you're seeing as a red line. We still have preference for in-district students, we still have a preference for children of employees, things that are important to our community. We still have all the basic information that needs to be there. Stop me if there's anything in the red line of the policy that you'd like me to, to pause on, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that otherwise. I'll just scroll through to kind of remind us what was there. The last, one of the last changes we made in conversation with our high school principals in particular, was the, to the timelines, moving those up, they were concerned about staffing and late applications for open enrollment, so that's what you see there. The categories of priority. Admission and revocation standards in the original policy, this language matches exactly what ASBA recommends, which is just the basic statutory require, or, or provisions that allow us to decline to enroll a student who's in the process of, of an expulsion, or who has been expelled and is serving that expulsion. And so, that is still there in the, in the basic policy. Transportation, Board Member Perleberg, I just noticed as we were talking, one of the things I remember that you asked about was this language here, in one of the recent ones, or as may otherwise be determined by the district. I just noticed that that got put back in. I'm happy to take that out again, to remind everybody, that conversation was about whether we needed the discretion to say we could also determine that we needed to add stops. I think Board Member Perleberg's concern back then was the economics of that, and so, we can, we can talk about whether you'd like to see that come back out. It was a, an oversight that it came back in, frankly. And then the rest of it is pretty much what I said. Do you want to talk about, do you want to talk about that right now, or anything else in that red line, before I move on?
Maybe I'll, at this point, talk about it offline.
Okay, perfect.
Just get some clarification.
Okay.
Because back at that time, there were specific reasons why the language is going in, and that may have changed, so we-
Right, okay.
Get into it if we don't have to.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I will move on to, sorry, Mrs. Kirby, you have a question?
Are you ready for questions?
Sure, I can take questions, I can go to the regulation, however you like to do it.
Keep going.
Okay.
I, I have, I do have a question. All right, I will wait too, I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay.
It may be cleared up.
So, as I mentioned, we did not have a regulation, which is why this is not red line, this is all new. Well, it's all new in terms of a regulation, it's all, almost all the language that we had already in our policy. So, we had in our previous policy, that eligibility language about, you know, reminding students that are open enrolling that we'd like them to remember that they need to, you know, have regular attendance and behave as good citizens. We put the application deadlines in here, we put in, again, from the old policy, notice to parents of their status, whether they've been accepted or on a waiting list, the timelines that I spoke about before. that I spoke about before. The administrative transfer language is still in there, I think you all are familiar with how that works, with the sending and receiving principals having a conversation before that kind of transfer happens. This is the newer language that Dr. Birdwell and Dr. McCauley alluded to. We talked about three broad categories for admission and revocation standards, academic, discipline, and attendance. With academic, we had a conversation about high school in particular, as Dr. Birdwell pointed out. Sometimes, we're having students seeking to open enroll, who come with very few credits, and the concern is, what kind of success is that student going to have? What are they going to be able to accomplish coming to us that late in the game with that few credit, those few credits? And so, we had a conversation about that language being on track to graduate with his or her cohort within the four-year timeframe. For discipline, we talked about excessive disciplinary or behavioral infractions that demonstrate a pattern of behavior that interferes with academic progress. And I'll thank Dr. Birdwell and Dr. Nance for that language that we came up with. That language was, one, to give people an idea of what we'd be looking at for, is this going to continue to be a successful open enrollment, as well as give our sites the flexibility to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And also, as Dr. Birdwell mentioned in the training piece, we'll be talking to administrators about different scenarios and what makes sense, and using good judgment, and being fair, and providing a level of due process to those students, so that they aren't surprised when we're having that conversation. As well as with attendance, excessive absences or tardies that are interfering with academic process, progress, the same idea. So, those are the highlights of the changes, and I'm happy to take questions, or pass them off to Dr. McCauley, or S., makes sense. Mrs. Kirby, did you want to go first?
Thank you. So, I do have two questions back on the policy, and I apologize, I forgot to send them in to you before, but I, you're not going to be surprised, you've heard them before. The first one is, with respect to transportation, and I'm looking for the language in here, it says, it's right bef, it's the very end, and it says, "Of not more than 20 miles to and from the school of attendance." You've heard that before.
I remember that, and I'm trying to remember what my answer was.
Well, so, the way I interpret that, is that that language would allow the district to drive, I don't know if it's 10 miles out or 20 miles out of boundary, to pick up students and bring them back. And I'm uncomfortable with that language, allowing that to happen without a discussion.
And I recall, that's the statutory language.
It's the reimbursement language in the transportation piece. There's a couple pieces here that I think probably, and we'll try to figure out how to language it, but probably need, like, for instance, it's been practiced in the districts that I've been in governing board, that when the superintendent sets capacity, because it says shall set capacity, that the capacity setting comes before the board as an information, so that you know where the capacity levels are in the schools, that that's been a conversation at the board level, and it might be the same thing with the transportation, that before a route would be established, that the board would be given an opportunity to say, "Yes, we agree with that," or "No, we're not going to enter that territory." We have a couple places outside the district that have been traditionally, parents that were in unincorporated areas, that have chosen to come to Scottsdale, and so, we continue to bus, we have a full bus that runs in one of these areas. So, if we were to add to those routes, I think it would be reasonable to come up with some kind of language that if routes were to be added in this category, that they would be approved by the governing board prior to establishment. I think that would be critical, to have that conversation, because what that does is, it fiduciarily says you're going to be spending some money, and we would want to make sure that you would know what the reimbursement would be, and what the cost would be, so that it would come before the board. I think that would make sense. We could probably come up with some language to add there.
That, and there's, you know, there's a, political, might be the wrong word, it's the only one that comes to mind right now, political component too, that if we were to go to another district, so, right now, it's an unincorporated, a former unincorporated area, but if we were to go into another district with the, and take a busload of their kids, I sure would want to know about it before we haul off and do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Kirby. President Sneed, governing board, this is a conversation had at the superintendent level among superintendents in the state, and it is a very heated, debated conversation, when you're the district that somebody comes and takes your students, and so, there is that ethical process that says, in the ethical practice, "Do I want to go steal your kids, one day you'll steal my kids?" So, before we were to go out and reach into another district, we ought to have a conversation about the impact that that makes. Before choice, this was not an issue, you stayed in your own boundaries, and people didn't run out, but right now, you do have buses that run out of Tempe Union that go over to Maricopa and pick up, I mean, not one bus, multiple buses. You have other places in the state that run to go pick up other ethnic groups and already create diversity. I think before, you would run a bus out of the district to go pick up other public school students, we ought to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other question, she actually alluded to it, and that is the open enrollment Back when we've discussed this before, and maybe even the time before, when I was, when I would look at other like-sized districts, our peer group, their policies all had the open enrollment caps brought before the governing board for discussion. Some might even have gone an additional step for approval. I don't know that, I don't know that I, approval's necessary, but I do like the discussion piece, because of the transparency to the community that it provides.
President Sneed, governing board, I think not only the original setting of the caps, but then, an update as those began to fill are important for the board to be able to see, and the practice that I've been accustomed to is, it's two to three times that the board actually hears about the caps, because they're monitoring open enrollment. So, during the process of open enrollment, and when we close open enrollment, to again, revisit your caps, and how did we do, so that as we go forward, we also talk about adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Along the same lines, it seems to me that we had a date where the superintendent would tell us what the decision was for the caps. We, didn't, didn't we institute a date last time?
I'm remembering that, I'm looking in the language to see.
I think it was December 1 in here.
I want to say it was December.
I would think that if you begin to gather applications in November, before you start seating people, you better have your caps in place, so probably, in the December timeframe, we would bring you caps.
Yeah, I don't see a timeframe in here, under the rewrite, and I'm just wondering how to reassure people that it wouldn't be arbitrary.
And that's my, that's my recollection that it was December 1, and if it's fallen out here, we can certainly put that back in.
Sure.
I'm not finding it right now, but.
I also.
Logical sequence.
Sorry, did I miss a question?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have a couple more questions.
Okay. On the capacity, the way it's written now, it says, "A superintendent shall estimate how much excess capacity may exist to accept transfer students." Oh, sorry, that's not the right one. I'm looking for the language about, okay, I have it in here twice, I know. About school, about siblings. And it says that the sibling will, okay.
Under enrollment priorities, is that where you are?
Status of open enrolled students, it's in the regulation right now, the updated, and it's, it has a note, so. "All siblings of students who are open enrolled in a school may enroll at the same school, provided that a sibling will still be enrolled there when they arrive." What if they move up, like, if they're elementary, and they move up to the middle school, is that, the way this is written, they would have to be in the same school. And I'm wondering whether we couldn't change that to learning community, so that a family wouldn't be divided, where one child is going to a Scottsdale school and has an elementary, and then, when their kid goes to middle school, they get to go there, but they're shut out of the elementary school, so they're in two different districts.
President Sneed, that's a great point. That is the way the language was before, I'm not sure in practice, whether we looked at learning community, or school by school, it was learning community?
That's exactly how it is.
It was, okay. But if that's what the board would like to see, by learning community, we can.
It does, it does in the previous paragraph say, it doesn't call it a learning community, but it says, "Admission to the schools into which that school feeds," but in the note below, it doesn't reflect that, so.
Okay.
That would just be something that I'd like to clear up. And, so, the way, the way I'm reading the last updated regulation, and you can just, just curious, really, in practice, if, if a family open enrolls by the due date, do we notify them automatically every time, yes or no?
As I understand the practice, and I'm looking at Dr. Sitten for history, we were notifying people by February 1. I don't know that we were doing it as they were, it was February 1.
Okay, because what it says here now, that any applications for open, and, so, is it the same after the December 15th deadline, or after the deadline? Because new one says, "Any," let me read it, is it, "Any applications for open enrollment received after the December 15th deadline will be placed on a waitlist, and will only be notified if there's capacity for additional enrollment in a school and or program." So, I'm wondering, just as, as practice goes, does that mean that that family will just sit and wait and not be notified if there's no capacity?
Dr. Sitten, can you help, with how this has worked in the past?
Yeah, I'm, we're going to ask the historical piece here, and then, what we're going to do is, is make sure that we address that and talk as the practitioners, because one of the things we're trying to get away from are parents sitting on waiting lists, and parents sitting on lists for months, and two months, and three months. What we're trying to do is expedite, one of the issues we found out is that enrollment sits in one software system, active students sit in another software system, and the principals had no access to the open enrollment. So, we're saying, as soon as you have your list going, and it's date stamped that they're in, as soon as you begin to open seats up, you need to notify as soon as possible, because when we're waiting a month or two, they're going to the neighbor. So, we're trying to expedite the process, and so.
A little history.
We've got the history of it, we're trying to make it faster.
Yeah, yeah. Madam President, what would happen is, if someone put it in in January, they, they would know in February 1 again if they had room. So, now, if you put it in after February 1, if there's spots, they take you right away, so there was no waiting. But what happens is, we'll have to think about, is what happens with their siblings, is if you give them up until that deadline to turn it in, you could take them as they come if you want to, but then, you might get a sibling that's still before the deadline, that you no longer would have room for. So, I think that's why everything kind of waited until the deadline happened, and then, they start working on who's our siblings, and who's district employees, and all of that. But if someone were to turn it in late, but it's still in a January late, if they had room February 1, they would notify them too. So, they didn't make them wait if there's room. It's truly only if a Cheyenne school that might be at capacity for kindergarten, that you'd have that waitlist going then.
Okay, but in this language, it says that they will only be notified if there's capacity. So, that tells me that if there isn't capacity, we're not reaching out with notification.
They are able to go into the system and see where they're at, if they're being accepted, or if they're still sitting there. So, my understanding is that parents are able to go back in and see, "Yes, I was accepted," or "No, I'm still sitting there, not accepted yet."
So, they will be notified either way?
I think they have to go back into the system and check, although centralized enrollment does reach out to them to give them other schools that have capacity. So, anyone that isn't that OE, if they happen to put in a school that didn't have capacity, they're calling all of them to say, "Hey, we have openings at these schools, would you like to be considered?" And they also have more than one school on there, so they may be on a waitlist for their first choice, but get accepted into their second or third choice.
Okay.
So, they're, they're trying to place people somewhere.
Okay, yeah. My major concern with all this is families being in limbo, that's all. I just want to make sure we've got that.
So, Dr. McCauley, what I would ask is, that we again review before next Tuesday, the practice, and that the regulation assures that we're communicating with families, and that we're not leaving people on waiting lists that never know. So, let's just go back to that practice, sit down with Valerie, and let's, let's make sure, I think her point is well-taken, because I've heard those stories, that I've been on a waiting list, and I've been waiting, and I don't know. And so, I know that we say, "Well, they could go in and check," but shouldn't we automatically send a notice or something? So, so, let's, let's.
It didn't auto-generated an email that directs them to the webpage.
Okay.
But we'll make it back.
Well, in a follow-up call, with a little bit of encouragement to try one of our other schools, might not be a bad idea. I also have a question about the admission and revocation standards. It says, under the language we have here, "Open enrollment may be revoked by the school." I'm wondering, what does that mean? Why is there not an individual, why is it not the principal, I mean, one person that is, or is it going to be the site council? Is it going to be a special Jedi council? I mean, what does that, what does "by the school" mean?
The discussion really was principal, and so, thank you for pointing that out, that will be changed to principal. That was what we discussed all along, principal making that decision.
Yeah, I'm underfoot, but we want to make sure that that's, that's not a site council, that would be a school administrator, so.
That's a great point.
Probably it'll say school administrator, so that might be an assistant principal, or a principal who oversees enrollment, but school administrator.
And it's just, my, my concern is mostly that due process is followed consistently, so that we don't end up with a lawsuit, because you treat one person differently than another. Okay, so, I'm always working on unintended consequences. One of the things that might concern me is if, if there's an expedited process to revoke open enrollment to a student because of behavioral issues, you know, things that truly, honestly should trouble a principal. I mean, it takes a lot of administrative time to go through the entire due process. I'm just wondering if unintended consequence might not be that our resident students end up following the process all the way to an expulsion, and our non-resident students are sort of encouraged to leave without going through that. If we're not in some ways hurting our own resident students more, because they will have that on their record, and the others get another chance as they decide to go somewhere else. Do you want to?
I don't believe we would revoke, we would let that expulsion hearing happen if it was an explicable offense. Is that the word?
I understood.
Yes, expulsionable offense.
If you lived with my husband, you'd know manglidge. That's right.
Okay.
I get it, okay.
But any egregious offense that warrants expulsion, we would go through that process, because we certainly, that, that is due process. And we did talk about language to put due process in, where the minute you have that concern, you would have, at a minimum, a quarterly meeting with the parent, and the student, and the teachers, and the administrator, to try to intervene and make sure the kid does have every chance of success before that revocation happens at the end of the year, saying, "We're revoking your open enrollment."
And so, is it really a revocation, or is it more of like a barring from participation in the process the following year?
Yes, it, well, it would be, yeah, it's a revocation, yeah, that would be.
So, it's a combination, and you're revoking and disqualifying your ability to enroll for the following year, and fortunately, most revocations occur mid-year. And so, the other thing to take in consideration during training is that, you turn to revoke a student mid-semester, because there's an academic damage down there. However, if they are harm to self or others, it might be most appropriate to revoke them at that time. So, it does allow us to use some good practice, but at the same time, protect the students and the campus from inappropriate behaviors.
And then, I assume what would probably happen, is that if they tried to open enroll the following year, they would be behind in their credits, and they wouldn't qualify due to not being on track with their cohort.
Correct.
Okay. I think that covers my questions. Mrs. Hartman?
All right, thank you. And my questions were, I think, aligned with yours, President Sneed, but just a point of clarification, so, to me, the two big decision points in this, right, are decision opportunities or points, really, is open enrollment caps, capacity, and then, admission and revocation. points really is open enrollment caps, capacity, and then admission and revocation. And I was just wondering, is there logic intention around putting the open enrollment caps in the policy and the revocation and the admission in the regulation? Was that, is there a design behind that, or is there a benefit or a, and I'm looking at this more from a legal standpoint, but if it's a practice issue too, I mean, you can speak to that.
Well, and I'll let her answer even more thoroughly, but from the other districts' policies that we reviewed to see what are other people doing, we always found the revocation in the regulation side, not necessarily on the policy side. I think I found one district where it was in the policy.
And with respect to caps, we had a little bit of a discussion about the board, wanting to have a board discussion about what are the caps and that kind of thing. And the revocation decisions, we purposely used the word periodic in there, periodic review, because we wanted to have that flexibility. It was not by design, one was in the policy and one was in the regulation. But I do believe that having that admission and revocation standards in the regulation gives us the ultimate flexibility. And in terms of, from a legal standpoint, it doesn't matter that it's in the regulation versus the policy. It's what do we do, and are we giving due process to kids, and are we administering and implementing fairly and without discriminating? So.
Okay. So that's, that was kind of what I assumed might have been some of the logic behind it, because the regulation gives us a lot more flexibility and agility and the ability to make decisions in a decentralized learning community kind of way, which can be a good thing. But it also can create risk back to the application of this and the training and the development that needs to be behind it, so that there is a consistent application. Because we, as a governing board, we're looking at this as consistent execution of both policy and practice at a district level, not at a school level. So what are we going to do to ensure we've got consistency in those practices? And what are the safety nets to make sure we don't unintentionally do this way one here, this way over here, and then we, as a governing board, are responsible for inconsistent policy and practice?
Board Member Hartman, thank you for that question. It's not written out in regulation or policy, but we have on the ground several checks and balances, and those are administrators calling a lot of us, my office, Dr. McCollough's office, Dr. Sakos's office, Dr. Birdwell's oversight, and we are talking through, this is what happens now. We are talking through, why are we making this decision? What's the history? What's the documentation? Does this student have any special concerns that we need to make sure we're addressing? That happens now, and I fully expect it would continue to happen. Another piece that we look at, and I've talked a little bit about with some of our administrators in training, is OCR has a focus nationally on equitable discipline among different groups, and we've looked with Matt Linz at our data there, and we're looking very strong there. Really was happy to see that and have that conversation with Matt about that. So we have several spots along the way where we're having those conversations. When a student comes up for expulsion, now either I'm looking at it or Dr. Sakos is looking at it, and we're asking those questions, well, there's this red flag would happen there, and talking to the administrator. I would imagine that this would be exactly the same kind of process with the leadership team in reviewing these in a daily, day-to-day basis.
And I would add that, once people are trained, there will be accountability, and anybody flagrantly in non-compliance or not complying with this will be dealt with. Will be, I mean, by their supervisor.
Yes. So can I, can I just have a follow-up?
I didn't mean she's going to, I just meant by their supervisor.
Good point, and the superintendent.
I didn't.
The, I want to give you a couple of clarities under the law. So the law, the specific pieces of the law is that you shall establish a policy. The good part about the law is it doesn't give you specifics about that. It just say it'll be a policy available to the public, that the policy understands the admissions requirements. It doesn't talk about revocation or non-qualifying, but it does allow you to put in qualifying points for admissions. So there can be a non, you know, you get revoked or asked not to come back, but you reapply, you don't meet the criteria, so you don't get to come back. So the law allows it. The 20 miles piece is in the statute under open enrollment, so no further than the 20 miles. It also has to do with reimbursement, but it's actually in the statute under open enrollment as well. So you wouldn't go beyond that 20-mile radius. So just clarity, we did the law and then the policy and then the regulations. It's always good to go back and say, hmm, does it say that you have to establish those caps? Because early on in this process, there was, it just takes me back, gosh, 10 years ago, you had to actually do those caps publicly. And the interesting piece was that you could actually cap by grade levels within a school. And just because one school has closed open enrollment, as long as one school is open in the district, you're okay as well. You don't have to open all 30 schools. The statute doesn't require that. So some districts would open some schools, but not other schools because of capacity issues. So every year, the district should review those capacities and say, where do we actually have space available without overburdening a school? And what is an overburdening? And the governing board should have a difficult conversation about, we're going to cap at this number, because there is a moment where staffing becomes an issue and space becomes an issue, and appropriate learning space is a problem. So, and it's a great problem to have, we want to have a capacity problem, but it is a visit every year.
May I follow up with just one more governance-related question, then? So with respect to the admission and revocation, I am less worried about the flagrant overt situation, because I have every confidence it will be dealt with swiftly. But what I'm more concerned about is the unintentional inconsistent. And the response I've heard is, we're going to have training and all that makes a whole lot of sense. From a governance perspective, what I would be interested in seeing is not getting into the management of it, but what is the escalation process that you spoke to? I mean, I can call this person, I can call this person, I can call this person. That's not necessarily a consistent process. Different people can give you different answers. So what does that protocol look like? And then, so, and then in addition to that, I would imagine there's some type of database or of decisions. So this decision is this criteria, so that we can, you can track it, but you can share with us what that process is by which you feel comfortable that you're getting consistent answers and consistent results, so that we don't have that unintended consequence.
President Sneed, Mrs. Hartman, Governing Board, that is such an important point. Michelle, I'm thinking that in the regulations, we could maybe spell out that the, and maybe it's a check and balance moment, maybe it is as the principal submits the revocation to a district level for verification. And the reason for that is for us to assure, you were on a behavioral contract, or you were on a attendance contract, or you had a severe disciplinary issue of threat to self and others, so that it has that double checkpoint, and it might give us a little bit more comfort about, a little bit more of a comfort with that. So why don't we take a look at that? And it could go easily within the regulation process. I think we could spell that out.
Thank you. I will sleep better.
And we will be auditing these periodic audits to check to, to do our double checks, make sure people are following the process. It'll be part of our natural student information and reporting cumulative file audits. And so we'll be looking at that, and we'll be writing out standardized operational procedures.
Mrs. Perlibert?
Thank you very much. And Michelle, thank you. I know from history, this is a difficult conversation for you. So I appreciate that and know that I appreciate, I think we all appreciate that this, especially the revocation discussion, has been difficult. And I think we all do very much respect the complications, the concerns, the fears. But as you know, in past conversations that I've had with administration, it, to me, somewhat philosophically, is so important to our schools, that we have the belief that we're going to be designed for students to succeed, and we're going to be designed for our sites to succeed with our students, and that this revocation, thoughtful, a thoughtful process and fair and open, honest process is great, but it is necessary to have that type of environment where you are not allowing students to enter a school knowing they will fail and knowing that quite possibly their fellow students will be negatively affected by that. It's not in their best interest, our best interest. So I just think as we move forward with these conversations and really assess the concerns and the fears and why this is, why this needs to happen to really be what's in the best interests of our students, as we discuss what we need to make sure that it's, to do so that it's done well. And so just appreciate both sides very much. Thank you.
President Sneed, Ms. Perlibert, Governing Board, I just want to reiterate to you, this was the number one request I got from high school principals. And I don't think it's as major of an issue in the elementary, but the high school folks at my very first meeting with them said, what is your practice in this? Have you had other experiences? And only, when principals have only had experience in one district, that's the first question is they ask, and they ask colleagues, and they ask other people in other districts, and they said, you know, we really need your help in this area. So thank you for understanding that, that this truly came out of a principal request.
Totally believe that. And speaking of that, our principals' requests, the dates that you referred to, I don't believe they changed at all. I just wanted to clarify that. As far as those deadlines of when they can try and enroll in our schools, the meetings that our principals had and that discussion and that kind of end result, that's still, they are not changed.
Yes, absolutely. Still exactly what they asked for.
All right, great. The intentions are wonderful here, and I'm sure we can get to good practice.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Birdwell, I guess, can I, I'm not trying to beat this to death, but this is a, yeah, and this, this revocation of an open enrollment, I'm very uncomfortable with it, for obvious reasons, but did you say it came from principals? I mean, could you, I want to make sure I understand. You said it's the most common, I think, request from principals, or can you just explain that again to me a little bit more?
Yeah. President Sneed, Governing Board, Mr. Jackson. From 2008 until now, many districts began to accept whatever open enrollment they could get, because there was a decrease in enrollment and funding was an issue. And so the idea was, if they're breathing, take them. And so districts took on sometimes problems from other places that weren't necessarily their problems. A student, a district might let go of students, so taking them all the way through expulsion, they might do a suspension with an agreement that you unenroll. And so students seeking home, seeking other districts, would be enrolled into a school district that brought a heavy amount of discipline, potentially assigned drugs on campus that weren't being disciplined in another district appropriately. And unfortunately, not all of that data is gathered when a student enrolls. And then they get on campus and they begin to have the same infractions, and a principal will call a principal from another district and say, can you give me the discipline history of this student? And the legislation has changed in the last 10 years that have allowed us to get more information on a student. And by discovery, they would find out that the student has a longer history and that this has been a common practice, and the student has shopped district to district and brought the drug dealing and other issues with them. In those cases, however, unintentionally, sometimes policy gets written that restricts the ability of a principal to move a student out who really isn't the right fit, not there for the right reasons, might not have an academic focus. So it should be the exception of revocation, but it is a safeguard when you run into those kinds of cases where the prior district didn't uphold discipline and you've now inherited a student who is down a pathway that may be an ombudsman or another program is best. Or we've had students who have been enrolled here in Coronado High School with two credits and they're 17 years old. They're not going to graduate on time, and they're going to age out before they can get to graduation, but yet they were told to enroll all students. That was a great frustration by our principals. So early on, when I was hired, the principals sat me down and said, we have no control over who comes. Not only do we not enroll on our campuses, we can't say no to any student. And the conversation was, why do you, tell me how that is? Well, it's been the belief, take them all, and the second is, once you have them, you've got to keep them. And we said, well, that's not really true. If a student has behavioral issues, we ought to go through the suspension expulsion process. But then they began to tell the different stories of issues they had faced. And although they are the exception, they sometime can absolutely take immense amount of time on behalf of a principal to address the issues as they're disrupting the learning for others. So again, it should be the exception, and a check process at the district level to make sure that, yeah, we've put that student on an attendance contract, and we put them on a behavioral contract, and they've continued to break that, or they've assaulted not one student, they've assaulted multiple students, or they've invested not just for drugs, but for dealing of drugs. That we're invoking our discipline process, but also the ability to say, you're not coming back to Scottsdale. So it's an unfortunate, but it is the exception. Mr. Jackson realized that, we're not talking hundreds of kids here. We're talking a few kids per campus that principals just would have liked to have the authority or felt they had the authority. And some of these systems have been in place but not invoked. So there have been attendance contracts and behavioral contracts, but not necessarily used. So the principals just felt they didn't have the authority to ever say no. And so they took on some problems. And what happens is, your dropout rates go up, and your disciplinary issues become more severe.
Okay, thank you.
I just need, I just need to say, I have reservations, too. I'm kind of glad I'm not going to be on the board, because it does go beyond the intention of the law. And I, too, have reservations about consistent practice to make sure that our football players, that our stars of our team, get the same treatment as anybody else that doesn't contribute in that sort of way. So I, I don't see, I think in order to be extremely cautious, that it's going to require a lot of paperwork. And maybe just as much, especially in the beginning, to make sure that there's no lawsuit over you're treating this child differently than you're treating this one, and you have different expectations from this one and different punishments from this one. It's going to take a lot of documentation, maybe to the same extent as going through the legal expulsion process. And so I'm hoping that we're, we tread very lightly here and cautiously, because I think there could, there could be unintended consequences. As long as it's consistent and fair and it's documented, you know, it's.
I understand your issue, and I'm going to say that I've been in districts where football players were revoked for attendance issues and behavioral issues, just like any other. So it must be through practice and training. That's why Michelle and I have talked about, we must train the staff. However, it is a problem that needs to be addressed. And we also don't want to take every student through expulsion, because then they cannot enroll in any other public school. If we expelled them, they can't go back to their home school.
And that would be true of our own resident students, too.
Correct. But because you have excessive absence and are not academic successful, doesn't mean we should expel you. But we could revoke you, and you could go back to your home school. You know, or you're not on track to graduate, you could choose to go to the community college or back to your home school. But if I, if I take you through an expulsion process, then you cannot go into a public school if you've been expelled.
I understand.
So that creates another problem for the students. And trying to give multiple fairness and certainly fairness and equity across the board, we will strive for that.
And President Sneed, just anecdotally, what I hear from the high schools is, that's what they do. They actually take the kids through expulsion for maybe a compendium of behavior, but none of the egregious acts you would expect an expulsion hearing to come out of, like dealing drugs or assault. So they feel, they know that, they don't like that either, because they know they've just ruined their academic career for the rest of their high school.
because they know they've just ruined their academic career for the rest of their high school years.
Well, then I hope that they would be consistent with our own students, too, with our resident students at every point in the process. I'm sure, we all know how unpleasant that whole process is. But I just want to make sure that all students are treated fairly. That's all.
Ms. Hartman?
I have one last question. So just for the record, since we had a board member that feels this goes beyond the intention of the law, I would really like for the record or superintendent and legal counsel to really underscore, I'm assuming this is not going beyond the intention of the law. So for the record, like that equally stated as well.
So the state law, as Dr. Birdwell alluded to, says very little. It says we have to have a policy. It says a little bit about transportation and providing notice to people of what the policy is. That's the state law. Looking at federal overlay, we want to be careful. And constitutional, we want to be careful that we are providing due process, that we are not illegally discriminating against kids. And my part in this process is to make sure that we are not violating either the state law or the federal overlay or the intention of any of those laws. And so I would not be up here giving you something that I thought was a violation. I think that your points, several of you, are very well taken in terms of making sure that we are consistent and fairly implementing this policy. As Board Member Birdwell alluded to a little bit, I care a lot about that. And I think your point is well taken, Board Member Hartman, in terms of spelling out what that process is. And we have talked about that. And we can come back with a little bit more meat on those bones for you. And hopefully that will make you even more comfortable with the idea.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last thing, I will just, what I'm hearing sounds like we might be okay with the second read on November 22nd? Or would we like to have another round of discussion before we bring it back for a second read? So another information, more in the background and then a second read? I'm just trying to plan that.
For me, if the changes are made that say, that name a person.
Okay.
Responsible instead of a school. And if we change the sibling note so that it refers to the learning community, then that's what I would like to see. I wouldn't require any more discussion. Ms. Hartman?
Thank you, President Sneed. What would be, I'd be comfortable with the November 22nd on the agenda for the vote and not necessarily read. However, what would be useful in the board package is, "Accept these changes, redline the new changes" so that we can see the conversation that we had in there. And then that'll be fine in our board package.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kirby?
And just to add to President Sneed's list, the changes on caps.
Got it. I have that note. Thank you.
Okay. And we again apologize for the technology. She did send it redlined. I don't know why I kept erasing the redline, but we apologize for that. But we'll get it out early to make sure that works this time because some of you got blue lined and some red lined and some were orange lined. So we're working for the rainbow.
My assistant Louise wanted you to know that she really did send to a red line.
Ms. Hartman, are you okay? All right, good. Can anyone else use a five-minute break? We're at recess for five minutes?
6:15. And the next item on our agenda is item 3D, Information Discussion Item Regarding Gifted Learning Services Testing Fee.
Good evening, Governing Board President Sneed, Board Members, Dr. Birdwell and Mrs. Alivas. I'm here to share with you an item of procedure. Last time I was with you, we were talking about the different goals of the gifted learning services. And as part of that, one of our goals was recruiting. We've been working on what it would take to design and to set up a gifted preschool academy. In that process, we need to determine what students would actually be identified as gifted and eligible for these services. Also, during the fall season, we noticed that there were students that were taking sometimes four, five, six, seven, eight attempts at taking either the COGAT or the ANAT to achieve that gifted identification. And we kind of felt that that was maybe fiscally irresponsible for them to be taking it so often. But most especially, we were concerned about the harm to self-esteem as kids would repeatedly be taking the same test over and over, as well as the fidelity of the testing situation. So that is how we came to lay out this rationale for charging fees for gifted testing for students in our district and outside our district for different reasons. We did a preliminary kind of survey to determine that, yes, there were private licensed psychologists in our area that charged between 350 to 850, we've actually heard more than that, for services that are very similar to what we were providing. Other large districts were offering services for a fee that ranged from 100 to 180 dollars for testing fees. And so we came up with the proposal that students of school age that were unenrolled to our area, sometimes they would call and they would say, "Well, you know, we don't want to enroll unless we could find out for sure that we're eligible for gifted services in the district." And we had no mechanism to be able to offer them services. And so again, having an opportunity to charge them for that testing, allowing them to come and join our students during the three identified testing seasons that we have. So in the fall, we offer testing to third grade through eighth grade. Right now, we're in the midst of the winter. And so we have over 700 kids that are already, after the 700 from the fall, I thought it would have been a little smaller. But 700 right now signed up for the COGAT and the ANAT throughout the district. And so it's very popular. But we would be allowed, we would have the opportunity to have those outside the district students to join us. The third time that we do testing is a blanket testing of every second grader in the district so that we don't miss anyone. So we have students of unenrolled age, students that are enrolled. Possibly they would want to have an additional testing available to them, not during the previous three that we offer. So something like the summer, that's why it says the off-season, that maybe they would like to have an assessment done right before school starts to see if they couldn't get into one of our specialty, the comprehensive gifted programs. And then, of course, our preschool students was really what kind of kicked it off is how do we identify those little ones appropriately? So that's what we have to consider today.
So I have a question. The agenda item specifically says families not presently enrolled in SUSD. The explanation that we heard from you includes other scenarios, it sounds like, that...
There were three scenarios that were on the memo that we just talked about. We had enrolled students escalate.
But we have to stick to what's on our agenda here today.
Yeah, and so Dr. Wong, I think that we have an agenda item language issue that we will need to make sure that if you're asking the Governing Board to look at the fee structure for gifted, that the agenda for Tuesday would be aligned. It was our understanding in our office that was about families outside of Scottsdale that have requested you for, so maybe I misunderstood. When this came to us, we thought it was initiated because you were being asked by outside of Scottsdale's families to be tested for services. And it looks like it's broadened to three different categories. So we would need to realign the agenda items so they can't really address the pieces outside of testing families outside of Scottsdale. So we're not going to ask anything beyond that piece.
Okay.
Okay?
So that would take number two off. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sneed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have some.
Yes, President Sneed.
So I understand the fiscal responsibility. And I understand that because of, you know, the whole competition thing is, in education speak, is relatively new. And there's a lot of, this again, is unintended consequences that happens that my understanding is that charters and privates don't want to bear the burden of this. And so they're encouraging their parents to go to the district and try to get the district to pay for the testing. Is that what part of this intention is?
We do receive, and I can't say what people's intentions are when they give us a call, but they do call and they ask, "May we be tested with your students if we are not enrolled in the school district?" And we've been telling them, "No," that we do not want to extend that kind of service to people who are not enrolled in our schools. So it may be that, yes, people are trying to find a place that they can be tested and then receive services somewhere else.
And I guess part of my concern, and I'm sorry to bring this up with you earlier. I thought I understood the language and the, on the agenda and understood. I did talk to Dr. Birdwell about it and brought this up. My concern is with federal funding, that some of the language hasn't really caught up to the times. And so they refer to students within our jurisdiction. So I don't know if that's been defined as a political jurisdiction of the district boundaries or if we can further define it as our enrollees. Can anybody help me with that?
May I defer to our counsel?
And it may be something we have to research a little bit because I hadn't heard that interpretation of the law. So we may need to go back and do some research.
I'm, I'm, okay, I'm just concerned, I don't want to, you know, run afoul of. I know we have several different jurisdictions that we have to report to and they're not always on the same page.
The terminology is the jurisdiction?
That's what it's, that's what I, in my research, which is very limited. I have my internet degree, that's it. So, and one of my concerns with doing this is that we may defer by saying we're automatically going to charge. And I'm going back to just the out-of-district kids because that's what our agenda says. So I'm referring to this that we may have gifted students that are interested in our services, but that the cost, the initial cost, might deter them from actually enrolling with us because of the cost. And I was wondering if there's some way we could limit the number? Like maybe we do the first one free or we ask, or maybe, maybe we even say, "Well, if you're enrolled with us, then there won't be a charge." And have them go that extra commit, extra commitment and go that extra step. I'm just wondering.
President Sneed, Governing Board, we do that now. If we tell them, "If you enroll with us, we will do your testing for you." The issue is those who are, and Dr. McNeil not being here, but what he expressed to us is that you'll get a family that will call that says, "I'm considering you, but I'd like my children tested first." And then, "Well, who else have you considered?" "Well, I'm enrolled at ex-charter school, but I'm considering." And what we say is, "Well, please enroll and become part of the Scottsdale family. We'd be happy to test your students." So, you know, the other thing is that sometimes you miss testing at another system, charter school, private school, et cetera. And then you're looking at your local school, public school, and saying, "Well, public school is free, so can you test me?" And our answer is, "But you're not our student, so your jurisdiction question is so fascinating for me because that is a question we'll research. Are we obligated, because you live in the Scottsdale boundaries, but attend a private or charter, to actually consider you part of our jurisdiction?" I've never heard it in that manner before, so we'll research that.
Okay. That was the language that I saw in several different places.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
And...
May I address one more thing, President Sneed? We do accept outside testing if they have already been tested at a previous school. Let's say they come from out of state and they bring a test that is on the Arizona Department of Education's approved list of assessments. We do evaluate that if we can verify that the document is, is true. And we use that as part of the process. If it turns out that they don't meet our criteria, then of course we would offer, if they're in the district and enrolled, we would offer them testing with us.
Okay. And I guess this question is regards, also the agenda page. At the bottom, it says, "The impact on students." And this is the area of the agenda where we try to tie the subject that we're talking about to one of our goals. It says, "Offering gifted testing for a fee to students not in SUSD schools will enhance the ability to recruit students and serve the needs of our community." Can you explain how that is, would be used as a recruitment tool?
Well, if, if we're...
And your explanations last time sort of feeds into that, but I just wanted to make sure if there's other things that might, that I'm not considering.
Well, we're trying to get kids back from either charter schools or private schools right now. And quite often they're high performers or their parents are very motivated for them. And they want, they know we have a quality product here in Scottsdale. We can call it a product, but we have, we have amazing programs here. So they want to be in here and they want to be in those programs in particular. And so if we can test them, find out whether or not they qualify for it, then it seems like a no-brainer that they're going to come in and actually join our programs. So that's how we see it as recruiting. Also, you know, if people are eligible for gifted, then we can sit down and tell them, "These are the services that we have." And even if you're not eligible for gifted, we have an opportunity to show them this different amazing programs that we do have. For instance, the IB program that we just talked about tonight. People are interested in that. They, they want to be in that pipeline. And so we can share that with them in that discussion today.
I understand how the gift, having gifted offerings encourages people. I don't understand how charging them the fee encourages...
Oh, well, for right now, we're saying no. We're saying, "If you're outside the district and if you're not enrolled with our district, we're not offering you testing." So the no is, it doesn't matter whether they're gifted or not, it's no.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Kirby?
So I'm trying to understand where you're headed and where your line of que... Are you, and I'm asking, are you suggesting that rather than charge the families, we should just offer it for free?
No, I understand the total negative connotation of that. Especially, I was not aware that there were families that tested over and over and over. I thought it was a one-and-done deal.
And I want to apologize for that mis-titling on my part.
Okay. No, that's, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to understand the rationale. And I want to make... And I, and I want to make sure that other people understand, we're not talking about our in-district children, we're not talking about discriminating against anybody. That, I mean, I think that's important. Ms. Hartman?
Thank you, President Sneed. So I had never even contemplated that we were, contemplated that we were subsidizing a benefit. So just for consideration, what if we just charge the cost of it? And if you enroll in SUSD, we'll reimburse you 100% of it, since if you weren't in the district, we wouldn't have charged you anyhow?
Sounds creative.
You know, I just have to talk to my legal department, my finance department, to make sure there's a legal way to do that. And after that, it's a wonderful concept, because if we've, if we've charged you and you enroll, become part of Scottsdale, wouldn't it be good to just reimburse those costs to you? So we'll check both legal and finance to see if there's a legal way to reimburse after the fact.
Just for, just a position.
Enroll and show up, yes.
Thirty days money-back guarantee.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm not sure that you were heard.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thirty days, not, yeah, anyway. Other large districts are charging a fee, and they're not returning that as a tuition base, or, so just follow the same procedures. Okay? All right. So what I understand is, we can, we eliminate item number two, and the rest of it follows along with the title that we have. Good? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, we can't consider it if it hasn't been noticed for 24 hours. And I know that was in the notes, but that isn't what the...
We'll make adjustments for Tuesday, we just can't discuss it this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? Good? Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 3E, superintendent search potential next steps.
President Sneed, governing board, multiple members of the, of the governing board have asked for clarity surrounding the RFP 16107 that was done last year. I provided each of you with a tabbed book with, for research. Normally, we would have assigned this to Ms. Marshall, she unfortunately was out of town at the time that this began, so I know there's a bit of an awkwardness as the interim superintendent providing this for you, but we're very happy that she's back. And tonight, she's going to take the driver's seat, and I get to step back and recuse myself. But to get us started, I want to introduce, but you know, this came through multiple requests. It's the RFP, it's future, it's search process. So we've titled the agenda Superintendent Search, in order to allow you to have that full-depth concept. So this evening, I have a few guests. From Gus Rosenfeld, Susan Segal, who has represented the district on multiple occasions, but particularly in this RFP process, she had the privilege last spring of writing opinion on behalf of the, of the governing board. Caroline Blackley, from the Professional Group of Public Consulting, who is a procurement expert, trains school facilities boards and others across our state in the procurement process, is here. They're here to answer any question regarding this topic that you might have. And then we have in-house counsel, who's well-versed on this topic. And then we have in-house Dr. Sutton, from Human Resources, who has a historical perspective of superintendent searches for Scottsdale. That said, I've brought you the experts, and I've brought you the documents, and now I'm going to step away, so that we don't have any conflict on behalf that I might be an applicant in the future. So, thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to those who are much smarter than I am when it comes to these issues.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Birdwell. I'll just give you a little bit of history that I was able to uncover with Sandra's help. So it's not necessary that I was even here for these searches, but Sandra and I went digging to see what we could come up with. So you received some information about characteristics for the superintendent, and that was from a search in 2004 and 2008. Sandra was also able to find from 2004, the characteristics shared from the parent council, and some community forum sheets she had. Also, we did find a timeline for 2004, and I know that came up as a question, so I just want to add to it, that in 2004, the search began on 1/27 of '04, and with the proposal and award to the board, and was actually posted on February 2nd. In '08, there was an outside firm that was hired to develop a leadership profile for the board. They spent a couple of days in the district, they met with various groups, as well as in 2008, they met with each of the board members individually. Then that information assisted in developing the primary characteristics that we're seeking in that superintendent search at that time. So you have a summary sent to you about those characteristics desired. You also, I gave you the leadership profile assessment, and the rankings of the summary average from what they came up with from the different groups back in 2008. I also sent you a copy from another district that happened to be doing a feedback search on characteristics they're looking for, and sent that along for you to see it, too. So you have a couple of different, really what they've done in the past from '04 and '08 was taking a look at what did people want in the superintendent characteristics, and surveys or focus groups out to gather that information, and then provide it to the board to use in their selection. I just wanted to give you as much as we could dig up and find in folders and paperwork from the past.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton, and thanks for going to all this effort to pull this together. Couple of clarification questions that have bubbled up from the community. First question is, are we required to do a search by law?
I'm going to ask Michelle behind me. Required to do a search by law?
Good evening. Again, I'm Susan Segal. No, you are not. The simple answer is, you are not.
And then the second question is, policy, SUSD policy, does SUSD policy require a search?
I, I haven't, you've, I'm not asking you, I'm, because I know you. Michelle says no, and I have not done my own independent research. It would be highly unusual for a school district to have a policy requirement.
Okay, and I, and I just ask those because there's all kinds of conversations happening in the community, and so that kind of just puts us all on a level, a level of understanding.
Understood.
First of all, was that, was that the whole presentation before I ask a question? I feel like I'm like a clipper here.
That is the whole presentation. We're here to answer your questions.
Okay. I had a feeling. Okay, so for me, we're here to talk about process, a transparent process. Characteristics, great, but that's part of the process. So I, first of all, this binder was very helpful. And what we have in front of us is a chronological set of activities that happened from November 24th last year until today, in what we did in terms of process. So based on that review, I feel comfortable with the summary. And don't have a lot of questions, but I guess the question I had in my mind before I read through the binder, that may be in other people's mind, was that for me, the important part of the process was deciding if we do have a process, a go or no-go decision. And that's, to me, that's here, that's tonight, and that's the vote on Tuesday. So I'm, I really, I don't have a question. I think what would be good for all of us is if we believe that there's questions in the community, we just articulate them, so that we have a conversation around it, so that this process is as transparent and open and inclusive as possible, as we committed that it would be back on the date in this book. So, that's it.
Ms. Kirby?
So to that point, that point, thank you for the, thank you for saying chronology of activities and not chronology of events. Thank you so much to everyone who put this together, because it had every source document one could ask for, as to what's happened in the past several months. And honestly, I agree with Board Member Hartman. I read it, it was painful. I felt like I was watching a really bad movie, and the five of us were the stars.
Again.
So, so I am comfortable as well with the, with the conclusion, but is it worth sharing what that conclusion is, so that everyone in the community and watching online is on the same page? And actually, no, they, they understand that. Who might be, who might be the person to share that conclusion? And in summary form, like, what was the question, what was the conclusion, so that we're all caught up together?
Are you talking about the last time we had an open meeting together and an open discussion about it?
No, I mean, the, the conclusion that came with this book.
So I said I would recuse myself, so that was my work. And so I gave a conclusion, Susan, and so...
No, I didn't, couldn't remember myself giving one.
Jenna, whose conclusion? Okay, so you're actually, your conclusion in writing is in there as a piece of this. So my conclusion as a superintendent was that the RFP 16107, although not necessarily illegal, it was fraught with concerns with practice. Practice that raised concerns, not on any intent or to create harm or intent to confuse, but at a timeframe where the district was in a little bit of, of people that was occurring that created a series of events of some best, best storms. And in the intent of the board trying to correct, and go back to an RFP process, on January 7th, an agreement by ASBA had already been unsolicited and presented to the governing board, and the governing board had had discussion and dollars were talked about. And that's not a common practice. It would not be considered best practices in the profession, and particularly in public schools, and neither in the government sector. Although the law doesn't necessarily say that unsolicited is a piece of the public school process, from my interpretation, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not an attorney. But, but that said, in the practice, in every district that I've practiced in, it's been the rule of thumb, and the rule of the procurement department to say, never take a solicitation prior to a procurement or during the process. And if you do during the process, there's another statute, a regulation that comes into play, and I think it's Regulation 721046, it talks about, if you bring in consultants to present materials, then all, all of the vendors that are there must have an opportunity to present. And in this case, because the material was presented before an RFP, it puts an awkwardness in the process for the governing board, because the other two did not present or talk to you individually. Although the RFP process was not in place at the time that it occurred, so things were just out of sequence, and it happened. So it's just a little mucky. No individual employee of the district should be held to blame, or the governing board that you weren't trying to do best practices, it just got out of sync to what one would require processes to occur. So Susan's report was in there, and I got to read yours and your response to the AGAs, they got to read the concerns that Ms. Shields had brought forth. There was an opportunity here, Ms. Marshall's response on that. Caroline presented a letter as well. I think the conclusions were very similar in this process, that it was a, and so my recommendation in the very end was to say, the clarity of this is just do a new RFP, and you put this behind you. Now, that's not my decision to make. That was the conclusion that I drew from reading all of, of these and looking at law. So I'll go back to not talking.
So along those lines, I do have some questions that I'd like to ask. So what I've read is that between the prices of $10,000 and $50,000, we're only required to do a verbal price quotation. And the reason I know that is because other districts, that was the process that they followed. They were, other board members were surprised that we went out for a full RFP. But this is, you know, we, we tried to be responsible, and I think we did it with, under an abundance of caution because of Ms. Shields' letter, or at, at that time, it was because there was a threat that a letter was going to be filed. We did it anyway, the letter was filed anyway. And that we need written price quotations between the price of $50,000 and $100,000. Is that right?
President Sneed, members of the board, yes, that is correct.
And that the sealed bid process and proposals is anything over $100,000?
That is correct as well.
Okay. And I'm not sure all of that was explained to us last year. And I, so I guess what I want to know is, what's the difference between, what is an RFQ, what is an RFP, and what are the difference between the two? And when does one have to be invoked?
All right. Let me, let me address a little bit. You don't know me from Adam, other than I'm an attorney. Hi. I have been an attorney for longer than I'm willing to admit, but is, I will say, 35 years. And in 1983, I wrote the Arizona Procurement Code with two other individuals, that was the predicate for the State Agency Procurement Code. And then it was the predicate for the school district one. From 2003, 2004 to 2011, I was the Chief Counsel of Education and Health at the Attorney General's Office, and advised the State Board of Education on some procurement issues. So I do have a passing acquaintance with some of this. The, the issue is, an RFQ is a request for quotations, and it is easier, it is simpler. In my view, and I have been representing school districts off and on for 35 years, RFQs are used, they definitely are, but so are RFPs. And for a school district of your size, with, with needs of your constituents, and I know this district, I used to live in this district, you're very, very responsive to your constituents. You're going to want to have a process in place. I'm not sure that an RFQ will allow somebody to know the depth of what you want and the steps you want. The second thing is that I have acted as legal counsel in school districts, large and small, that have used both methods. The larger you are, the bigger pool you usually attract, and the better reputation you have, the bigger pool you attract. And there's, there's issues, I'm talking about applicants, not search firms. There's issues when search firms don't know Arizona law. And so I always require, or always request, I don't require, that RF, in an RFP, you put in things like, we'd like to know that you know what the Arizona Open Meeting Law is, or what the Arizona restrictions are on travel expenses for bringing in someone from out of state. Those are all different things that are Susan-type things that I like to put in, that you probably would want with an RFP. There are other school districts that have used the RFQ. The most one, the one most recently is Alhambra Elementary School District, went out a year and a half ago, I believe, and they came in at, you know, they're much smaller, and they're an elementary school district, and I believe they came in with quotes, and they awarded it at around $14,000. But theirs was pretty simple, straightforward. You have, they didn't have as much, I've seen your searches before, that you've done historically, and I know that you do have a lot of engagement, or opportunities for engagement. I also think that, that an RFP is a better process in light of the history of this situation. As Dr. Birdwell said in her, in her memo to you, there were some hiccups, blips, whatever you want to call them. No one person was, we can't, you know, don't want to point the finger at anyone person, but it does dissipate public confidence in the process. And so the more open you are with an RFP, and so you, so everyone knows what you're asking the search firm to come back with, I think it's, I think it's good. And so in light of the unique history of this particular procurement that started a year ago, I believe, I would suggest you do an RFP. And, and I don't think it's going to take that long to do. It shouldn't, because you can just call up some of the school districts, I can give you names, that have done RFPs, and just copy theirs, and you already have one as a template.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Any other discussion questions? I... Oh, go ahead, Ms. Hartman.
So, for me, the RFP-RFQ conversation is secondary, although your advice is prudence would be RFP and we can fit it in our process, which has always been my objective, is that we have a process that allows us to be as thorough as possible. And so there's a timeline in here that says, if we issue the RFP today, we could actually get this ball rolling and meet our goal of a June 30 date. And we can talk about that timeline if that's necessary. But to me, that all that conversation is secondary, because I think the conversation we need to have is whether an RFP or Q process is necessary at all. Because although the process is important, absolutely, we essentially have had a 10-month interview as well. And so we need to think through, what's the highest and best use of all of our resources? Our financial, our time? And that's the conversation that I think that we should be having at this point.
And just as a reminder, because we do our business in our meetings, in an open forum with all five members present, the last... Let me see if I can find this. In our minutes from the last time that we had this discussion, the vote established that we were going to defer the process, until the fall. And that was a 4-1 vote, and we actually used the word defer. So, just so that the community knows, unless there's been discussions with board members behind the scenes, that's where we stand officially, just as a jumping off point for that discussion. Ms... Oh, you do, okay. Ms. Perleberg. Yeah. It's working.
Okay. I think this is a good point for me to jump in right now. As a board candidate, this fall, I had to publicly kind of own my opinions a lot more than my fellow board members up here. So, I felt it was important, as we hit this point in the conversation, because I agree, at this point, there's one big question mark, an elephant in the room, in front of us, because we've had an interim superintendent interviewing for this position for 10 months. I feel the same way. I feel and have shared publicly that she has built an incredible leadership team, and our interim superintendent has clearly and quickly defined those priorities for her leadership team. I think she's brought forward challenging, honest conversations about our reality. She has brought... She's opened up data-driven dialogue, working to improve instruction, and has developed solutions that were impactful and decisive. All of our community has been craving these things, and our interim superintendent has been showing us that for 10 months. She has engaged our educators at every level to bring student-focused decision-making back to SUSD. And for months, I personally, individually, have received incredible feedback from parents and staff, expressing their excitement over our valuable momentum in this district, and the strong hope that that momentum will continue. Her leadership has shifted our district's direction so significantly and so positively, I feel I've been able to see at the sites that energy as palpable in our district. As we sit here tonight and have this discussion, I always value stakeholder input, and will obviously continue to throughout whatever process we leave here tonight deciding to choose. I mean, I guess you throw it out there, we always have emails available all the time. So, input is always important. But when I look at the question of, what is our next step in a superintendent's search, I have an old saying just absolutely stuck in my head, and every married woman will understand this. When you find the right wedding dress, you stop shopping. So that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Ms. Kirby.
Thank you.
So, one word that keeps popping up, and I think it's popped up already in the first, from the first two board members, I forget which one, maybe both, is momentum. And I repeatedly hear that the district has so much momentum right now that we've been craving. And so while Board Member Hartman is thinking about, is this the best use of our time and our resources? He said something else, I can't... I've been thinking, what happens to that momentum if we launch this search? What happens to the momentum that we have happening right now in the Coronado Complex? What happens to the momentum that we have going with Gifted? And the list is very long, quite frankly. And I've been asking myself, am I willing to risk losing that momentum? And the answer is, I'm not. So, it's just a different take on the same opinion, or the same lens, but it's really, I'm not willing to accept that opportunity cost.
I always invite feedback, and so that's... The vote isn't until Tuesday, and we have an opportunity for feedback between now and Tuesday. And that is what I would encourage. But I can share that, you know, the criteria that I use in any executive hiring position is fit, need, and community, in this specific situation. And for me, fit, is it the right fit, right? Is it the right cultural fit? Is it the right fit from all stakeholders, being our students, our teachers, our administrators, our parents? I know over the last 10 months, I've asked every parent, every administrator, every teacher that I've met, what they've... What their opinion is, and it's been positive. It's also been stated, well, there's a lot of change, but it's good change. And change is a little scary, but it's always been positive. So I continue to solicit that feedback, and I get it unsolicited on a regular basis as well, and both are fine. So, from a fit perspective, an educator, for me, what I've learned in the last 10 months is that, you know, there's a lot of talent out there in what a superintendent brings. But a particular talent is an educator speaking to educators. And I think that has had a lot of value and added competence in our district. So for me, that fit is also that talent. Secondly, in terms of need, I'm in a place where our district has a lot to be proud of, and we need to build on our successes. And we also need to recognize where we need to grow and change and innovate. And I feel like we do have a lot of momentum in those areas. I do think that not everyone is able to accept the same rate of change, so we need to be thoughtful and mindful, so that we don't lose some unnecessary people along the way. Because change, everyone does have a different rate of what they're comfortable with adopting. So we need to help and bring people along, as well as challenge. Those are not mutually exclusive ideas. And then last, in terms of community, I have talked to a lot of community members, solicited and unsolicited, but I also believe that our successful passage of our bond and our capital override, is the community speaking to us in terms of their confidence where we're headed and why we're headed there. So I think that is a pretty significant data point that we should all take into consideration. I can also speak, I'm pretty active in the community, it's probably one of the... My passions of the board is how I work with the business community, and how I work with the civic community, and how I work with the state universities, and the Charles, and the foundations, and the Rodels, and the Helios. And I've dragged Dr. Birdwell along to every single one of those, and have said cautiously each time, and if it's not worth your time, please don't go. And every time, you've been embraced and received with just, not only warm reception, but also a confidence and a view that, hey, here's a real partner for us, we want to work together. So I feel like I have been on a 10-month interview. That's my job. We do not have a better... We do not have a more important job as a governance organization than to select the CEO. So having said all that, I would never want to short-change the process, but I feel like I've been working through the process and have been getting solicited and unsolicited feedback. And if there's more out there, I'm always welcome to have it, in the most respectful way possible, because we may not always agree, but it's important that we respect each other in how we communicate our views and ideas. So, thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
This is bringing up some of this discussion from 10 months ago, emotion, I guess. These are always a bit emotional, but I did want to follow up a bit on some of my colleagues' comments. This has been a 10-month interview, and one of the things that has struck me, and Ms. Hartman hit it perfectly, was when I first met Dr. Birdwell, at one point we were talking, and I talked about the bond. And that was always something that I, you know, for all of us, for me included, that we have facilities that were just in desperate need of rebuilding. And I'd been working with Dr. Peterson prior, we all had, and it truly... It just felt like we were not making... We were not getting there, for a variety of reasons. And there was frustration, and Dr. Birdwell came on, and I've never seen anything like it, somebody that could actually, as an interim, right out of the gate, put together a team of architects and building experts, and basically, you know, facilities, a review of the facilities district-wide, and essentially built, for the board and the community, a very clear plan on what we would be doing and how we needed a bond. And she brought us all along, and we all talked about it. It felt like we were going incredibly fast, but it was controlled. And anyway, here we are, 11 months later, 10 months later, and we have a bond to rebuild a whole bunch of schools. It's really, in my opinion, going to put Scottsdale schools, it's certainly going to help us on our path for the next 25 years. So, that was an incredible thing, and I agree with Ms. Hartman. The vote from our community, the strong support for the override, capital override and the bond, was in fact, I think, a vote of confidence in our leadership. Having said that, these are far from perfect plans. I do wish we had an ability to have... I wish I had more community input in this. You know what? We had talked about doing that back almost a year ago, and I do value that, and I have been talking to people for 10 months, and I haven't been getting the exact same responses that my colleagues have, very positive. It hasn't been 100%, and there are some concerns from people, but I guess what I'm asking through this is, I would love to hear from you. As we move forward before Tuesday night, I would love to hear, good or bad, thoughts, because, you know, of course, I think we all want to hear if people have thoughts about this. So, anyway, that's where I am with this, so thank you.
Ms. Kirby. Okay, thank you. I want to come back to this, both of you mentioned the bond and the override election. And that election struck me deeply. And being the data person that I am, I went back, we had over 200,000 votes cast between those two ballot initiatives, over 200,000 individuals in our community, not just our internal community, we've often talked about trying to be more externally focused as well, our entire, all the stakeholders, voted with their pocketbooks. And I appreciate the work, Dr. Sutton, that you gave us, and, you know, here's what you've done in the past with surveys, but when I looked at the participation rates, I think I counted 71 respondents in one of the superintendent's searches where you gave us that data. And I reflect back on the forums that we had with Dr. Catalani, and, you know, maybe 50, 60 people, 100 on a good day, possibly. And while I hear where you're coming from, I do... It just, it's all, that would all be internally focused, and it would pale in comparison to the resounding voice of support that we got with the ballot initiatives. And as Board Member Hartman said, our emails are always open. And we, I too, have been getting community input on social media, on email, face-to-face. It's been coming for the past 10 months, and there's no reason that it can't continue to come for the next three days, four days. And so I am also open to that.
I do, I just want to make it clear that I value the stakeholder input above all else. And this is a great conversation. My fear, and I'm going to be very honest, is that there are employees, the employee group, I have heard that they're afraid to talk to us, and that concerns me deeply. And I'm going to just throw it out there. They're concerned for their own jobs, they're concerned for their principals' jobs. And while I am very impressed with a lot of the things that have happened, I have to, in the back of my mind, question, can we have both accountability and more flexibility allowing all of our stakeholder groups to talk to us freely? I heard a lot of good things, but I have to say that everyone that I heard that wasn't good was prefaced with, I know I'm not supposed to be talking to you, and that troubles me deeply. And I want to put it out there publicly that this is what I've heard, and you should just all understand that. I also have a little bit of a fear that during... The 10-month process is a great benefit for us, and I've been impressed by so much. This is kind of strange, because this feels almost like an evaluation in public rather than in private. But, so there's so much that I've been impressed with, and I guess my fear going forward, and I just, mostly saying this because I am leaving the board, is that I hope that things that are promised to board, each board member individually, or as each board member's pet peeve or project is addressed, that it's done in an open way, that it is, continues to be open, and that we still value, we let everyone know that we do value their input very highly. I mean, this is not just us, this goes back a very long time, and I would hate to do anything to make people think that we are changing that direction. And I know you've all valued the same thing, and you've all said that you value morale very highly. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that's my biggest thing. We can have accountability and high morale at the same time. I don't think that... We deserve it, and it's not too much to ask for. And I don't know whether Ms. Kirby or Ms. Perleberg, I'll let you duke it out, I didn't notice.
I hit it pretty quick.
Okay, Ms. Perleberg.
Sorry. Sorry. And I don't want to turn this night into a therapy session, too, but with all due respect, President's need... with all due respect, presence need, as a board member, I have heard those same phrases for four years, the minute I got on this board. And I didn't dismiss them then, I don't dismiss them now, but, but when you have to put these decisions and this role in historical perspective, you, you have to put everything in the right place. We've been living in a culture of fear for a very long time, and I for one, for four years as a board member, truly believed in it, and hated it, and tried very hard to have discussions with teachers and with principals and with staff members, that talked about what an empowered, engaged, educating community would look like for SUSD. I had many of those discussions, and every single one of them was, you didn't hear this from me, and you didn't meet me, and you don't, you forget my name when after you leave. So, that's, that's not new to me in any way, shape, or form, but what is new to me is, are the conversations that we're having as a board, we're having in this district, the conversations I am still currently having with principals and teachers and staff members directly, is all of it 100% rosy, perfect? No, of course not. There's, there's been, there's been setbacks in communication, and there's been a lot of work to recover from those setbacks and keep this momentum going. So when I go back to all the conversations I've had for four years as a board member on what did an engaged, empowered, educating community look like in SUSD, for the last 10 months, I have strongly felt we've been moving there. So, again, I'm not dismissing those fears, but they're not new, and we're still going to work through them, and I see a healthier culture in that process. And it may hurt for a little while, no doubt, it's going to, just like any little physical therapy, as you get healthy, it's going to hurt before we get better. But I have 10 months of lots of conversations as well and input, believing we're going to have the SUSD health and culture that we have wanted for a very long time, so I'll just add that.
And I don't know if there are any additional comments, but just want to remind you that we're noted for next steps in the process. And we've been okay, but let's just keep that in mind.
I trust that if Dr. Birdwell was going to object, that she would have done so. Hopefully, she would have just hit me over the head, said, ah, turn around and look at me.
So, Governing Board, I said I would be quiet, and it's just not like me. So, new, new search. So let me make a public statement that I've been asked multiple times, and I just feel like I need to say it publicly. I get questioned on, if there's a new search or you're committed to this district. I had a conversation with my cabinet today and said, you know, I really came in here for an interim, I came in here for a little stint. Unfortunately, it's not my nature. I didn't know that. I came out of retirement, I didn't, you know, when they say interim, you're supposed to just go have fun. And I thought that I would, I would come in and I'd keep the, keep the school system going forward, and, and that's what I thought I was doing. But what I didn't know is, it's not my nature. My nature is to come in and help as much as I possibly can. I wasn't perfect in the last 10 months, but when it was brought to my attention that I made mistakes, I went back and tried to talk to faculty, and I appreciate the coaching I got from my team, from Julie and others who sat down with me, and I'm always open to that. But here's what I want to say, the one question I get asked all the time, am I committed to Scottsdale? I'm more than committed to Scottsdale. And I know you're debating the next superintendent step here. If your next step is to say, Dr. Birdwell, would you like to stay and continue this momentum, the answer is yes. So know that upfront, that I very much enjoy this district, I think it's an amazing community. I don't want you to wonder if I'm committed to you, I'm very committed, whether I'm ending in June or whether I'm here for a while longer. This is probably the best place I've ever worked, and I sincerely mean it, and heavily tied to, you've got really great caring people, we've had a wonderfully committed board, we have new board members coming on, very committed to students. I don't believe that there are any perfect leaders out there, and I'm a lifeline, and I'm continuing to grow, but I will tell you this, I really love any experience here in Scottsdale, and I appreciate all of the time that you have all spent with me, and helping me understand the Scottsdale community. So, very proud of the achievements the last 10 months, but don't ever doubt that I'm not committed to you. I will give you my 100% every day I'm here, whether June 30th is my last day or not, I'm committed to you. So don't, don't have a question about that.
I see no other lights, and so this is still information discussion item, so this will be brought back on Tuesday night. In the meantime, we, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you blinking.
No, I just turned on, sorry. But I did want to ask, as far as, is there any need to make a motion for an agenda item at this point?
No, we don't.
Or request, or how will we?
It's already there for Tuesday.
I thought the agenda item was to discuss an RFP.
Oh, well, then we can, well, that would still be a vote, that could be the vote.
So I have a future agenda item request.
Okay.
That we enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Birdwell, and we might want to discuss with that, if that meets every, meets legally, is that the language that we need to have? Or do you understand from the conversation the gist of where we're trying to head and can craft that language?
I can't tell what the heck you guys are thinking. Yes, I do. Sorry, get a little punchy. Yes, I understand what you need, and we'll get it on there. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Are there any other future items that board members want to propose, topics for future consideration?
Ms. Kirby.
Sorry, I do have one. We talked about it tonight, the ballot initiatives and the bond, the override passing, I would like for a request as a very near future agenda item, not necessarily Tuesday. What are, I'd like to start working on that, so sooner than later. I don't necessarily want to wait until the new board is seated.
I think we have that already. Okay. So can I call that initial, we'll figure out what to call it. Yeah, we've talked about it. Anything else? Okay, Ms. Hartman.
And we've already talked about this, but I want to reiterate, because it connects really well, if you don't mind, it connects really well to this conversation, and this is continuing our effort to get shared agreement and shared language around what our strategic plan is. And the reason why it's very relevant to today is because our mission and our strategic plan should be bigger than any one individual, any, whether it be the superintendent or the board, so that there is a clear, that is, that's the reason why we have a strategic plan, so that it's a path in the future that's bigger and larger than any one individual or any one elected official. So I want to make sure that that's early in our process with our new board. Thank you.
Great. Okay, with that, then I make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Kirby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.